It is Monday, June 3rd. We've got us at 7:04 on my watch and we're going to call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, to the people of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk?
Counselor Perry.
Present.
Counselor Hilton.
Present.
Counselor DiMederos.
Present.
Counselor Katz.
Present.
Counselor Coulter.
Present.
Counselor Cook.
Present.
Counselor Driggs.
Present.
All present.
Okay, and just for some context, this is a special meeting. It's Monday, June 3rd, and we're taking on matters from our regular meeting, which was not a week ago, but it was a week ago was the Memorial Day holiday, so that would have been Tuesday, May 28th. We also had a special meeting on Wednesday, May 29th, of which we had two of our four finalist applicants here for interviews, so I know there's a lot on the agenda, but we're originally starting with the remaining, with the other two candidates. I think those will take about half an hour each, and I think we've all just introduced ourselves, so we have with us Mr. Timothy Chapman, and it's very informal, and I think what we've been doing is if you'd like to just make some, you know, opening remarks on brief introduction, what you're interested in, and then it's been an open floor as fair warning. Ms. Driggs and I have, and I think our town administrator may also have a JD somewhere on the wall. If the other counselors don't ask questions, we'll jump in to make sure we have plenty for you, but it's pretty informal, so thank you so much for coming, and if you'd like to go ahead and open.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. My name's Tim Chapman, as you know, and I was an assistant city solicitor in East Providence for 16 years. Then I became a city solicitor and held that title for four years. The East Providence, as you may know, is quite a colorful council, interesting place to live. I've lived there my whole life, and the few of the councils I handled, it was interesting. So, there was a fallout between the council and the city manager, and they asked me to be acting city manager, which I agreed to take, and I did that for six months, then they made me city manager, removed the acting title, and I did that for, I believe that was about a year. So, I've got experience both as solicitor, as city manager, and I'm not trying to take anybody's job, town administrator, so I do-
I'm sure you take the help.
Yeah. I do appreciate having people with JDs as well, so that's always helpful. The, I've gained a lot of experience. I had a very good mentor that was solicitor while I was an assistant, and really guided me in trying to work with councils. It's a very difficult job of a council person, and residents demand a lot, and that's a good thing. They pay a lot of money in taxes, and they deserve a good product, they deserve good services, and it's something I really like to do. Municipal law has become something that, it's, it can be fun, and it can be aggravating, but the end result is something that I really appreciate because you're helping the people, and I think that's the bottom line. So, I'd be welcome to take some questions.
I find your 25 years' experience very impressive, but what I find really interesting is that you were a town manager and a town solicitor, which I would imagine gives you a special insight of how a town is run, and probably would help you in working with the town administrator. Could you like to elaborate on that?
Sure.
Like, how you feel that experience makes you a better town solicitor?
It really does. It showed me another door to open about how the council has to deal with things. Being on, being on that side is, like I said, a very difficult job, and I don't think a lot of people can appreciate how much work, effort, and sacrifice that you make in that position. I know that in East Providence, they did not get paid that well. The budget commission took away the healthcare benefits, and I know there's a lot of phone calls from constituents, and you can either decide as a council person to engage yourself fully or to step away, and I think most of the people who were good council people were fully engaged. That's what I like to do. That's where it's something that was, a love of mine, was to be there and do what was necessary. So, I went from a part-time job to a full-time job, and I really gave up a lot of things with my practice to do that, but that's the way I approached it, and I found it to be very satisfying when you accomplish some very good things. We get a lot of things done in East Providence. We went from a budget commission to enjunk status on the bonds, to have investment-grade bonds, and, you know, a lot of it was working with the department heads. We had excellent department heads. So, working with the council, working with the department heads, and trying to get to a better place was something that I really enjoyed.
Thank you.
I guess one of the questions I like to ask is, just speaking for myself, but one of the things that I'm talking a bit about is thinking of this role, maybe not just in the traditional, you know, sort of field of pitch and throw the ball back, but really thinking of it more as a traditional general counsel role, so really managing the legal services function, not just being asked a legal question and answering it back. And I actually, did I notice you have some business experience as well?
I do.
Which I find very interesting, because I would imagine that would position you to fully understand what it's like to interact with lawyers, not just, here's a legal question and answer it, but can you perhaps comment a bit really on, and I suppose you've heard of this as well, this trend of managing a legal services function, and it was probably clear from the RFP that, you know, this is one lawyer of perhaps a half a dozen that provides some services to the town. We have lawyers for, the school committee has their own lawyer, bond, council, police prosecutions, a few others, and so a lot of this role would be interfacing and managing that whole sort of function. Could I maybe ask you just to comment a bit on that viewpoint, and if you disagree with it, don't hesitate to push back?
No, no, no. It's an excellent question that you combine with the role that you have as a solicitor, you manage a budget, and when I took over as solicitor in East Providence, a lot of the business, a lot of the legal business was being parceled out to other attorneys. Professional services were going out to other attorneys. I looked at that budget, and I said, "We've got to cut that," which we did, and we cut it immensely, and we brought back those services into our office. I handled it, and I had two other assistants, so I required them to step it up, so to speak, to provide those services for the town, for the city, so we could manage our budget much better. With my own law practice since 1994, I've had budget on my own end. You've had malpractice, taxes, insurance, et cetera, so, you know, you know as an attorney that you've got to run your business like you would a town, and you've got to watch the budget and keep things focused, and that's what I believe I did, and I think it worked well. I think you could look at our budget, and you could see it going from something over $400,000 in professional services to about $200,000. So, it was cut more than half.
How much of that is litigation, which is just inherently hard to control?
Ah, there was some litigation, maybe not even 50 percent, but we had the trust, but there was, I thought foolishly, work going out that didn't need to, so we kept it in-house, where it should be, if you can do it. If there's, there are some things that do go above the expertise, that may fall into that line, but with planning, zoning, litigation that the trust wasn't handling, that's what we kept in-house.
Yeah, I just, thank you. So, when you were, the law firm you mentioned, Magosker, Dalgans, Walman, is that, was that your first experience?
It was. I was there for about nine years with Magosker, Bigden, and Walman.
And what kind of law did you do there?
Soup to nuts. It was a general practice. I cultivated a lot of real estate, but we did a lot of litigation, subrogation, planning, zoning, really everything. I handled very little bankruptcy, and I started with doing some family law in the beginning, but it really wasn't something that I liked that much. Nobody liked attorneys, so I stayed away from it.
Or fighting clients.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Real estate was a little bit better. People were happy at the end of the day.
Okay. And then when you went into, I'm interested that, you know, you've had various legal council jobs with towns. How did you morph into doing that from, and how did it affect your practice? Because at that point, you were now out on your own, I assume.
Yeah, it's, the way I look at it, it's very important to try to represent one city or town, because if you don't, and you have a number of cities and towns, they're going to suffer, I think. So, I managed to stay on track with representing East Providence, and then when they had a change in leadership, I ended up getting called by the Town of Johnston, the Town of Coventry. The Town of Coventry, I did prosecutions. Town of Johnston, I don't think they overlapped. They may have, but I don't think they did. With the Town of Johnston, I did, represented the planning board, and also did some other work with the town as an assistant solicitor. And then when I got the job with East Providence, I just stayed with East Providence. I felt that was enough work. Spending half a day in the city hall was good each day to get all the work done. That's my personal opinion, and I know there are other firms that handle a lot of cities and towns, but I think it's important for the council people to be able to have access 24/7.
Okay, and I noticed that you indicated a law firm that you would use should you need coverage. Have you used that law firm in the past during the time when you were otherwise involved and maybe didn't have the time to do some stuff?
In the five and a half years that I was city manager and city solicitor in East Providence, I don't recall missing one meeting. I think I showed up late for an hour at one time because I missed my son's senior night. Tonight, I'm missing another son's All-Star game, but I know you guys miss things too, so I get it. But that firm, Mr. Conley and I have worked together when I was an assistant city solicitor for 16 years. He was a city solicitor, and that would be my coverage just in case anything was to occur. He's got a wealth of experience, probably one of the preeminent city solicitors in the state, but that would, he would assist with litigation if need be. He's got a full staff. He's got, I believe, five or six attorneys as well.
Do you feel that there's any conflict in having somebody act as a solicitor for a town when they're also involved at the state level, creating legislation, and as we've seen in a recent spate of cases, has a direct effect on some of the town's ability to do their own negotiations or manage things? Is that troublesome to you?
I, I'll leave that up to you to decide, but I prefer not to. I prefer to have independent judgment with the council, because you can run into conflicts, but I'll leave that up to you to decide, because I know there are other candidates, so.
I guess I was also thinking about Conley, too. Yeah.
Yeah, well, that coverage would be potentially either filling in on a meeting that I couldn't make, but like I said, I've got a very good record of making all the meetings, but you did ask in your requirements to put in any gap coverage, so I did include him.
Yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You mentioned a little bit about land use in your role in East Providence, or I think it was Johnston Prior. Did you have primary responsibility for land use and zoning?
I did. I was the attorney for the zoning board, and I was attorney for the planning board in East Providence, and I was also the attorney for the planning board in Johnston.
Okay, thank you. As a municipal solicitor, what do you see the most important role that the municipal solicitor has in terms of serving the council, and more specifically, the community?
Accessibility is probably the key thing, and also getting along with people, not only the council, but with residents. Like I said before, residents pay a lot of money in taxes, and they expect a lot, and if I can't represent the council and give them my full attention and accessibility, then I think it's going to affect the residents as well, and your relationship with those residents. So, I think it's very important to have that communication, an open communication.
And my last question has to do with working with the council that's split, as this one is, but I'm relatively sure, given all the years that you've spent in East Providence, I know the answer to that question.
Yeah, East Providence is a very unique city, and I wouldn't say this would be a cakewalk, but East Providence, if you look at our city council meetings and all the publicity we had over the years, it was, I had a couple of very difficult councils, working with each other, not necessarily with me. I got along, I thought, very well with them, but there's different personalities, there's different agenda items, so I understand that. It's, people fight hard for what they believe in, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for coming. Do you have anything else on your plate right now that you'd also be doing while a solicitor? I know some people have multiple cases or clients and-
I do. I have a number of clients that I've represented, but I've represented many of them for 20, 30 years, almost 50 years. So, it's a general practice, but nothing, I don't think that's going to stop me from having full access with the council and with the residents of the town.
And kind of on a related question, what led you to, where do you see this particular role fitting in a career path? Was this, are you intending to slow down and pick up a new angle, or just another job you saw an opening and wanted, had some space and wanted to apply, or was there any thinking in that regard?
I like municipal law. I think this is a very good town. I've come down here for visiting some of the restaurants, going to the beach at Little Compton, we'll stop and have ice cream, and I've had my kids down here, and I like the town. I think that in my career path, this is a, another very important step in representing an excellent town on my resume, which I think is important. I'd like to stay here as long as you'll keep me, so that's how I look at it, is I'm in no rush to put my stamp here and leave.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
We're trying to talk, our fire chief is moving. That's part of our job requirement.
I'll help you recruit.
I think you mostly answered one of my, one of my important questions, which is just the unique, somewhat unique nature and responsibility in a role like this, is that it puts you and sometimes us in a situation, unfortunate situation, of being adverse to, say, a resident or that we're a public servant to, and just the nature of litigation, and so that suggests, you know, we of course have a responsibility, the client is the municipality, of course, but could you just comment a bit on, you know, how to handle, you know, doing the job, but still doing so with, you know, tax, with the, from time to time where we just have no choice but to be adverse with one of our very own people that we're here to work for?
I've had many occasions where I've, as solicitor, I've sat down and discussed things with residents, given them the respect they deserve, and try to work things out, because they're very passionate about what may be going on, be it a housing violation or, maybe they just didn't like what the department head said or did. And many times, sitting down and discussing the solution or discussing what went, what went on, what the facts were, can be very helpful. I think that helped me with, as city manager, and definitely helped as a solicitor. Working with the town administrator would be very important as well, because really, that's your lifeline, you're, you're, one of your main people that can assist in working with the residents. So, I think with the solicitor and the administrator working together, a lot of times you can come to solutions, and you can head off either litigation or problems. Talking, communicating, like I said, is one of the main things.
I'm sure with your litigation practice, you've participated in mediation or arbitration, alternative dispute?
Yes, and did grievances and many different things with either as solicitor or as city manager.
At least five minutes left. Is there anybody with any follow-up questions, or? Otherwise, I just keep going, and nobody wants to add.
Yeah, I would like to ask some questions.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that in Tivana, and probably in other communities as well, department heads are among the people who make a demand on the solicitor's time, and if you could comment on, you know, your experience in that regard, to the extent it creates a time management issue, how you deal with that, and any other observations you have about that particular relationship.
Sure. To have the department head's cell phone number and email address is vital. We would have staff meetings in East Providence, either when I was solicitor or as city manager. That's where, you know, you can sit down with them and discuss as a whole, or invite them in. I had a very good relationship with all the department heads. The chief of police and the fire chief, they would talk to me on a regular basis, and very importantly, the Department of Public Works director. I would go out on the truck with him and snowplowing and see what things were like, go down to the garage and try to understand what the employees went through on a daily basis. That's not an easy job either, you know? They go out there and try to do the best job they can, but having good department heads and having responsible department heads makes my, would make my job as a solicitor and a city manager much easier. We were lucky in East Providence had some excellent department heads, so that's a key opponent, and I think you know better than anybody how easy it can make your job or how difficult it can be.
Do you have a number of independently elected officers, such as our town clerk and our town treasurer, our town sergeant? They would have direct access as well?
Oh, absolutely. City clerk and I would talk on a, sometimes not only a daily basis, an hourly basis, and they're-
That might happen here, too.
Oh, yeah. Well, I met Nancy. She's wonderful, so that wouldn't be a bad thing.
Any other, any comments?
No, I think I'm-
Well, there's always something that, no practice, we had a, we're very happy with a long-term electric credit solar contract that I think our town administrator worked on with our solicitor team for six months, so I'm sure there are some areas that we would want to coordinate and-
Isn't that meatery? We had in East Providence, and we started down that path, and we had a hiccup, so we had to restart.
Okay.
Yeah. 25 years was the contract that we had, and it's a long investment, so I understood it. And we had the streetlights, so I've been through it all. It's all good.
Given the, I guess the fortunate dilemma, there can only be one lead solicitor. You may have seen in the RFP, our intent would be to keep you on the roster of special counsel. We do hire special counsel from time to time. I just want to confirm if for whatever reason the general solicitor offer wasn't extended or you still have to accept, you'd still be interested in remaining for special counsel needs as they might.
Be happy to help out.
Thank you so much. You were fortunate enough to get a big crowd.
It's not for you, though.
Shucks. Well, thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
Great.
Have a nice night. Thanks.
Kind of cute, that's it.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Robert Craven, I didn't get the chance to meet you before the meeting, but if you'd like to come on up and settle in?
I know him.
I'll get brought back up. I don't know how effective I'll be, but I'll try.
He wasn't born when I started practicing law.
Nicholas Salidra, I work with Bob.
Great, so nice to meet you. Thanks so much for coming. I don't know if you had a chance to hear, the audio's not the best, but same drill, we have about half an hour. If you'd like to just make a general opening, the floor's open, and-
Sure, I think you have to know a little bit about me, and who I am, where I came from, and how I ended up here. I've been practicing law in the state of Rhode Island for 36 years. First nine and a half years I was in the Department of Attorney General as a prosecutor. Last five, I ran the public corruption unit, and I prosecuted most of the cases that you remember from the 80s and early 90s against large named public officials, such as Ed DePreet, the former governor, Joe Malacone, the person responsible for the banking crisis, Ralph Perry, the head of Rhode Island Housing and Mortgage Finance Corporation, Antonio Almeida, Superior Court Judge, and I think that's a pretty representative group.
You're afraid of nobody.
Well, let me put it this way, if I wrote a book, I'd have to leave the state. Then I went into private practice. I did insurance defense work in practice law with one of the Rhode Island Supreme Court justices now, Frank Flaherty. I worked for a Boston-based, large firm, Boston-based firm, and then from that group, a smaller group of us branched out, and there were 12 lawyers in total. And I practiced with that smaller group for the next 10 years, and then I headed out on my own. I spent the entire 25 years, first 25 years of my career in the city of Providence practicing law, and then I left and moved to North Kingston, and I'll give you Rhode Island directions. My office is right next to where the Red Rooster restaurant used to be, and now everybody knows where to go. And I, I'm a litigator by trade. I spend most of my days in court. Today was no exception. I was on trial, still am. As you know, I applied for those aspects of this job involving zoning, planning, and litigation, where I find myself most comfortable. However, I have been since 1998 a solicitor, town solicitor or city solicitor in at least one community. Right now, I'm in Charleston. I have been there for the last 12 years. Prior to January of this year, I spent 10 years as an assistant city solicitor in the city of East Providence, doing litigation as well as prosecution. Nick took over the prosecution, my associate, for the last five years, I believe, and did a great job. He's a good litigator. He's a good research guy, an excellent backup to someone who spends their time in court. I've also been a solicitor at Foster. I've been, for six years I was there, and I've worked for doing specific litigation, always generally, almost always, zoning, planning, et cetera, for the city of Cranston and the town of Westerly. So, I've spent a lot, 1998, so that's 21 years I've been in the solicitor business. I enjoy that kind of work. As some of you probably know, I'm a member of the General Assembly. I'm the chairman of the House Judiciary Committee. Many of the people that are in the room with the coach, t-shirts on, I remember seeing a few months ago when we had hearings on issues involving gun legislation. I enjoy that public service type work. I think that being a town solicitor is a public service. You are helping provide guidance to five folks in this instance. You are helping provide guidance to five folks in this instance, who are elected by the people, usually they're not lawyers, to give them guidance and direction as to what the best thing and the best direction is for the town to head, in reference to any number of issues, probably including some of them on the calendar tonight, so that's who I am. Some of you may also know, you have a recently new-employed middle school principal, who has the same last name as me, and I happen to be her husband. So, here in Tivon and tonight, I am Susan Craven's husband.
That's what I thought, okay.
Well, the school committee has their own lawyers, we're clear from ethics, as far as I know.
So, thanks. Happy to answer any questions.
I guess I'll just kick us off with my usual, and I don't know, maybe this one, obviously excellent, deep experience in municipal law. Any comments on managing legal services from sort of a general council multidisciplinary function, really providing an array of legal services, rather than a more traditional get a question, field a question? We do have something like six other lawyers that provide services to the town, and we also do occasionally hire special labor on council schools. Our police prosecutors separate at the moment.
Nice guy, too. Very nice guy.
So, and I imagine you deal with the trust as well in your other work?
I do, inter-local trust.
Could you just comment a bit on coordination to make sure that a whole array of services would be fulfilled, even if you're not the one personally delivering the legal services every time?
Sure. Well, every action has a reaction, especially in politics. So, you cannot presume that if you have one lawyer heading down a particular path, that he or she, depending on who they are, knows what the big picture is. For example, I'll omit the municipality, but in one instance, I remember the school department filing suit against someone who had a relationship, part-time, evening, you know, extracurricular activity-type classes that folks take at school. In this instance, it was a high school. And come to find out, the case was in litigation, and the judge pointed out that you sued the municipality for money, or rather, the municipality is suing him to return money, because there was some evidence that he had taken money, but you have not involved the treasurer. The treasurer is on the town side. So, to have a coordinated effort, you would have one person know that when you were answering a complaint, even though they had directed it towards a school committee, it's got to be coordinated with all departments. And that's even for a legal standing. You can't even be there unless the treasurer has been named as a party, and is represented as a party before the court, so. There are a number of things, we could go on all day, where, and you mentioned the trust. The trust usually handles most of the litigation, that there's coverage. But I had a major case involving a civil suit for three wrongful death actions when I first got to Foster in 1998. A young man named Sabetta had shot and killed three people as a suspended police officer using his police gun. So, there was three wrongful death actions. Well, I come in as the person representing the municipality, and the inter-local trust is involved as well. I know you all know your former solicitor's brother is Mark DeSisto, who's like the main player, main lawyer for the inter-local trust. There was a huge coverage question. Is an intentional act, a criminal act, covered under an insurance policy? And that question was not answered by the time that case was reached for trial, because there was actions that were taken before I got there by the previous solicitor. So, I tried a case, Mark DeSisto was on my side, not knowing whether or not he was going to turn around if we lost and say there was no insurance coverage, and it's up to you, you're going to pay. So, four months into it, I had an opportunity to nearly bankrupt if I lost the town of Foster. But that takes coordination with all parties, even your hired party that comes through your insurance policy, so.
So, just so unfair, are you interested in the role of sort of general corporate advisor, or are you focused more, say, on land use and perhaps litigation matters? Because we've done it all, so there's no right or wrong answer.
Well, I applied for the litigation jobs, zoning, planning, and the litigation that comes from them. I know that the town council is another cup of tea with, you know, boards, commissions, interacting on the problem of the day, and those types of things. I did not apply for that. I'm not saying that if you asked me, I would turn it down, but I did not apply for it, so.
I was, yeah, I was going to ask, it seems like you have your plate pretty full right now, so I was wondering if you really had the time to dedicate as the town solicitor, but you've just made that clear that...
My presence is the only thing that creates time conflicts. I'm one of those people that thinks Saturday's a workday, and I work till I get the job done. So, that's why Nick and another associate that's in my firm do work for me. He's my eyes and ears, I talk to him more than I talk to my wife, and I hope that doesn't say anything about my marriage, but I do, so.
I'm curious as to your interest in planning and zoning, and I only ask that because of all the places in municipal government, that's one of the places where often there's a conflict with residents for whom this is their first experience with a border commission. You know, land use and zoning ordinances are complicated sometimes, it's not an easy topic for somebody who just wants to put up a garage, and they get a little, sometimes overwhelmed, A, with the process and the zoning ordinances, but also frustrated because it doesn't seem fair. So, I'm curious as to your approach and your perspective, because I do think it's an area of municipal law that requires a lot of patience, and sometimes a lot of explaining. So, I'm a little curious about your approach, particularly in resolving things before they end up in litigation from planning and zoning.
The last thing you just said is the most important, in my opinion. Often, especially the neighborhood problem, the neighborhood application, I need a special use permit because I have a pre-existing non-conformal use. I want a lot line variance, because I want to put a shed up, or whatever. They are often, in my mind, analogous to the experience I've had for the last, let's see, four even years' Novembers, where I, hi, Bob Craven, I'm running for state representative. And I get an earful from those people about what their problem is. And I attempt to solve it by taking notes, assuming I'm re-elected, and I have been, and then seeing if I can use the position I have to help them, to guide them through that process, so that they have a positive experience, and they kind of like state government, and feel as though you reached out and helped them. The ripple effect of those types of relationships is mind-boggling. I run into people in North Kingston now, at, say, Walmart, it's one of the bigger stores in the town. And I recognize their face, but I don't really remember where I know them from, for sure. I could have been, could have been from a long time ago. You helped me when I needed help, you know, you reached out to me, or in Foster, or in Charleston. You helped me when I needed some help. You explained it to me. I understood. I learned that trait from politics, and I learned that trait from a long time ago, from a really smart guy who later became a really famous lawyer, who taught me for a semester in trials for practice and procedure, a guy named F. Lee Bailey. And he once told me that the most important thing is to remember that you're speaking to average people, and you have to speak like an average person so they can understand you, as opposed to speaking like a lawyer. That's my father used to tell me, quit talking like a lawyer, so.
Bob will say this himself, but we end up helping people who could be clients, and never charging them a fee more than we actually can, just because he wants to help people. The politics aside, and going into the law, and I've been with Bob probably about 10 years now, you can believe that. I can't believe how much he helps people. And breaking what seemed like complex legal doctrines, or areas of law, down to simple terms, is what he's trying to teach me every day, until you talk to a jury. But when we have people come to our office just looking for help, how do I do this? This is what seems like a complex process, but it's not that complex, you just do this, this, and that. From a personal perspective, I'm also on the Richmond zoning board, a board member myself, and I see what your average person, I see their average person's problems, if you will. They want to put a shed up, or they want a chicken coop in their backyard, maybe that's a Richmond problem, not a Tivon problem.
It could be here, too.
Oh, yeah, I'm your expert on that. It's just simple things that you don't need a lawyer for, that in a five-minute discussion, that particular person will thank you forever, and it's invaluable advice to them in that moment. And I think that's how the solicitor can help your town's people, and avoid the expensive litigation that potentially could follow.
And maybe just a follow-up, in those circumstances where it's just inevitable, it just comes with a job, where sometimes, you and you probably have as much experience as anybody, or we have to be adverse to our own constituents that we serve, we work for, particularly as a prosecutor, could you just comment on how to strike that balance of your client, the municipal corporation, but doing so in a way with tact and respect?
Well, I think...
I think you said it perfectly, tact and respect.
Because it might be me in the traffic court, right?
My experience doesn't even cast a shadow on Bob's, but I did East Providence prosecution from 13 up until this past year. I have some rough numbers on these 10,000 cases, and I look, I say that myself, I can't believe it. I've prosecuted people, and they thanked me after, "Thank you." Wait a second, I just prosecuted you, because I was nice to them. And that's the best I can do, and the best I can do for them, and I think that resonates. From a zoning perspective, I think there's a lot of area for compromise in certain matters. Those meetings with neighbors, what can we do here? Why are you concerned about this, and what do you need? Where you can make a compromise. Now, there's a lot of circumstances where there's just going to be litigation, there's nothing you can do about that, but avoiding that is key.
And I'm sure, along with all the classic litigation, all the ADR and mediation?
Yep.
Same sort, if nobody jumps in, I just keep going.
I guess my concern was just similar to Councilman Medeas, that you feel, you seem very, very busy, and...
But I actually looked at it pretty closely, to where you, what nights you have, planning and zoning meetings.
Yeah.
And I get to pick which two nights, of the three nights, that I would be at the General Assembly, that the committee meets.
That's what I was going to ask.
In this instance, obviously, we meet, for the most part. This year, this is the first year I've chaired judiciary. Prior, I chaired labor, and then previously that, municipal government.
When does the General Assembly meet?
They meet Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday at 4:00.
But it can go on into...
It can go on to the night, and the only thing that tests is my ability to rise again the next morning at 5:30, when my wife loves coming over here and crossing three bridges, leaves at 6:00 in the morning, so.
So, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday?
Yes. But I get to leave the General Assembly at whatever time I wish, unless it's, I'm chairing one of the committees, my committee. So, if it, I looked at when your meetings are, and any conflicts Nick would handle, he always has handled it for me, so.
Yeah.
And it's only six months a year, we do, well, I shouldn't say only, it's six months a year. It's January 1st, or thereabouts, too.
But in terms of, and maybe for zoning and planning, that might not be as important. It sounds like during the day, you're in court a lot, in your availability to...
I am available mornings, I use the 12-ish to 2:00 period of time to return, I've never had a problem returning phone calls, and I'm out at 4:00, even if I'm on trial.
Yeah.
By way of example, you were working on a matter for the town of Charleston today, wall on a felony, very serious felony trial. Working for the municipality, picking up the phone, answering questions during that trial. That's quite frankly crazy, but that's what I saw today. And he wouldn't tell you that himself, but maybe that's why I'm here.
So, we've had, I'll be honest, we've had an issue with turnover in our planning and our zoning office, and we're about to have almost an entirely new team. One of the things that's happened, that's tripped us up in the past, is that it's been a rather stove-piped approach, with the building official having his lane, and the code enforcer his lane, and the planner having their lane, and in some cases, you come here and you may get the same answer from different people, or you may get slightly different versions. Have you done any work, or would be in a position to help us better integrate those various functions, so that when you came in, you could get one consistent answer that you are relatively sure of, and find a way to help people work across those particular lanes, so that we'd be more efficient?
Yeah, I think I could do that. I think, you know, I don't know if you're going to have a brand-new team.
Relatively, yes.
I've had that experience in the past, and I've noticed this, the older I get, the grayer my hair gets, the smarter people think I am. So, I get people to listen to me now, because that guy's been around a long time. So, I get the respect, I guess you, I used to give other older lawyers, when I was a young lawyer, and now...
Working on it, working on it.
Yeah. It's, I think that would be a concern, you know, I'm the building official, and therefore, I'm going to, wait, wait a minute, let's look at the integration of the roles here, because at the end of it, if anybody makes a mistake and goes to court, it's my responsibility, so can we work together? And I've never had a problem getting people to work together, ever. And that happens sometimes, by the way, in the private practice. I do a lot of zoning and planning work, and I need to get a planner and a zoning official to get together, because if I need a special use permit for the subdivision that's being built, or whatever, and they're not on the same sheet of music, so I try to anticipate it before I even start, make sure I know the personalities, and solve the problem. And if it was part of my job to know the personalities, then hopefully I'd be able to solve those problems.
Evening, I did want to ask, we had the experience this year of thinking we were negotiating with our labor unions alone in a room, and it turned out the General Assembly was there, too, decided to come in and pass legislation that changed the rules of the game out from under our feet. I wonder, and I imagine there are similar circumstances that could arise in zoning, where there's some issue we're having, we're trying to decide what to do with zoning, and the General Assembly is going to think it knows better. And that creates, in my mind, some bit of conflict with a solicitor, or even a zoning land use attorney, who would be making decisions that we'd have to abide by while still following our instructions as our attorney. Could you comment on how you see that, or don't see that as a conflict?
Well, when you're talking about a conflict, my first reaction is, does it violate the ethics laws? And there are, you've probably heard of general exceptions, where if it applies to everybody, there's nothing the General Assembly, with very few exceptions, that they do with reference to zoning and planning, that doesn't apply to the entire state. Sometimes there are special bills that go through the municipal government committee, which do finger-point towards particular municipalities, giving special relief or authority from the General Assembly. But I can't solve the problem. The Constitution does say, "The General Assembly shall prescribe, and the municipality shall, within the police powers, enforce." And what you're referring to, I guess, is either the firefighters' overtime bill, or the Evergreen contract bill. And which one doesn't matter, it isn't important for this discussion. Yeah, there was a majority vote, and they changed the law. Is that a conflict? If I was in the midst of negotiating one of your contracts, that would be a conflict for me to vote on it, because I would be specifically impacting something that was currently going on, that I was representing a specific client on. Happened to me, you probably know, I think it was three years ago, with the tolling Happened to me, you probably know, I think it was three years ago, with the tolling bill. I was representing a large, I think, one of the second-largest trucking company in Rhode Island. And I had to vote on whether we were toll or not toll, so I recused myself. Because my client specifically said, at a hearing before the Finance Committee, "If you, if you pass this, I'm either going to pack up and leave the state, or I'm going to, you know, do something else that will terminate my business. I'll just close it." Well, I'm his lawyer. So obviously, I had a direct financial relationship with him, Mr. Collins, who probably know Mike. And I had to recuse myself. He wasn't happy about it, but that's the law. I had a direct financial interest in the outcome of that vote. And ironically, my vote would have been no. But I couldn't vote on it, because you can't, you can't, you can't only vote in favor of your, of your conflict. You have to have no conflict regardless, so...
I guess just in summary, I assume, particularly since you had a narrower scope of litigation of land use, that you would be interested in staying on our list of special counsel for special matters that come up?
Sure.
And we'd probably have a follow-on conversation about economics, but the rate that you quoted at 200, is that a, that's a blended rate for all?
It is.
All, everyone on the team?
It is.
Okay, well, thank you so much for coming out. As I said, we gave you a great audience tonight.
Yeah.
Hopefully you can meet up with your spouse for dinner.
Yes.
She was cooking.
Why don't we just take a, really try to keep this at just two or three-minute stretch break, and then we'll resume to the regular order. Thank you. To the regular order, again, this is a special meeting, but when we knew we, in addition to conducting some of the interviews, we also have business that was remaining open from last Tuesday. And there was a little bit of, a little bit of, I guess, confusion. It was pretty late at night, about 10 o'clock at night. We are on the agenda item now, originally sponsored by Councilor Katz, seeking approval of a resolution declaring Tiverton as a Second Amendment sanctuary town. Last Tuesday, we had approximately an hour and a half of public comment and debate. The floor was open, there was a main motion, that main motion failed, and procedurally speaking, the floor is still open, and Councilor Driggs does have the floor. Now, we do have several items tonight, and tonight we do, are we still having the executive session, Mr. Administrator?
Yes.
And how much time do you expect to need?
One minute.
Just one minute?
Hopefully.
Okay. You never know how...
We've heard that before.
So I, I don't, I recognize many of the faces. I think what makes sense is Councilor Driggs has the floor. We'll have some initial discussion, I will take more public comment. I guess the, I don't know if there's a right answer, I think I'd like to give speaking priority to those that did not speak last week. Again, those with a connection to Tiverton. We don't need to know where you live, but just tell us your connection to Tiverton if you choose to speak. Maybe keep it a little bit shorter tonight, because we do need to get on to the other business, and it'd be particularly appreciated, if I understand, Councilor Driggs is really seeking more of a modification of the prior main motion, to really keep your comments remain to the modification language, if you, if you can. If you made a wonderful argument last week, for or against even the concept of resolution, I'm not sure that needs to be repeated. We'll see how it goes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Councilor, Councilor Driggs.
Thank you. I just wanted to state briefly that I took a position last week that I couldn't support the wording of the resolution as presented. And this week, I've had a lot of time to reflect on my thoughts, and I'd like to clarify where I am. As I did mention last week, I am a Second Amendment person, I believe very strongly in that. I was very actively involved years ago, well, not so many years ago, when there really was an effort in Rhode Island to eliminate the Article 22 right to bear arms. And there was a lot of testimony in the State House. So this is an issue that doesn't seem to disappear. So what I thought about was, and what I want to say, is I, while I abhor any gun violence, like so many who spoke last week, I don't believe the answer comes in turning immediately to restricting in any way all the rights of gun owners. It would be like banning all cars, because if you violate the laws by driving drunk, it's just, it's not the right approach. As a mother and now grandmother, I too am sickened when I think of Sandy Hook. It's, but I'm also sickened that a shooter of obvious mental, with obvious mental health issues wasn't helped sooner. And I'm equally sickened for the same reason, that there wasn't a legal gun carrier in that building to stop that carnage. Same thing for the shooting in that Colorado theater. So much of our violence happens in gun-free zones, where lawful citizens are literally disarmed. I do not believe the situation is to limit Second Amendment by infringing on the constitutional right to bear arms. I do not believe the lawful gun owner should be criminalized in any manner. I do believe in following the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Rhode Island, and the Charter and ordinances of Tiverton. Like Councilor Coulter mentioned last week, I too have taken at least six oaths, very serious oaths. One when I was sworn into the California bar, one when I was sworn into the Massachusetts bar as an attorney, and then the Rhode Island bar as an attorney. I then took an oath to be on the Budget Committee here in Tiverton. I took the same oath to be on the Tiverton Charter Review Commission, and now to be on the Town Council. So my motion tonight, I feel accomplishes two issues I had with the first draft. I, I was disturbed by calling it a declaring Tiverton a Second Amendment sanctuary town. Not because I believe that any part of that resolution that was presented implied or suggested that we were going to be offering a relief from having to follow the law. But I thought it would, I would be more comfortable if it were labeled a, a resolution declaring the support of the Second Amendment, excuse me, and opposition to the infringement of the right to bear arms. The Rhode Island law constitution is very clear, and it's very, very short. The right to bear arms shall not be infringed. That's, that's, there's no may in that. It shall not be infringed. And then, secondly, I combined the, the two resolves into one, that I think actually represented what we all heard last, last week. The first is, again, that we would be inconsistent with the policies of the town and its police department, and the chain of command. The Tiverton Town Council affirms its support for the exercise of sound discretion in the enforcement of laws impacting the constitutional rights of citizens under the Second Amendment. And I think, as we all heard last week, Chief Jones stated, "That's exactly what he does." He, he applies sound discretion in enforcing the laws. And we've, and further affirms its intention not to appropriate funds for the capital construction of building space, or the purchase or lease of self-contained systems to store weapons seized in the enforcement of any law that infringes upon the constitutional right of the people of the town to keep and bear arms. Which basically is exactly what Article 22, Article 1, Section 22 of the Rhode Island Constitution mandates. Finally, I, I would like to mention that I received two phone calls last week that were very, very helpful, and I think in more ways than I suspect. The first was from Linda Finn, who had been here, and is with the Violence Against Guns group, I believe. And the second was from Nan Hiru, who also is with that group. With both, the conversations were very, very respectful. I think both of us listened to the other. We understood where we were coming from. It wasn't, I think we got away from approaching whatever disagreements we have, thinking that we both were these rabid people who believed in, it just, it was very heartening, because we really did have a conversation. And Linda Finn in particular thanked me. I was very clear when they both called, that I wanted, they were thanking me for my vote last week. So I wanted to be clear right from the start, that, you know, should this proposal pass tonight, I intend to vote for it. And, but they thanked me for my thinking about it, and having the position I did. And interestingly, after our talk, Linda Finn actually called me back about half an hour later, she was on her way to the State House, to inform me that Grace Diaz had withdrawn that bill that was currently there, that would have restricted the right to transport guns in a car. And perhaps it made me think, if this, if this was statement from Tiverton, if this resolution position from Tiverton can have that effect, it will have served its purpose to alert the state to what we expect from them. So thank you, and that's all I wanted to say.
This doesn't matter, procedure, is that a... Sorry, as a matter of procedure, is that a motion then?
Yes, I thought I had said, I'm sorry.
I might have missed it.
Yes, it is a motion to, I move to have the resolution I presented tonight.
And this would be the document 19-01 dated June 3rd, in the Solicitor's outstanding new format?
Correct. Correct.
All right. All right, we have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second the, the motion.
Okay, we have a live motion on the floor. I don't think I could summarize the changes any better than Councilor Driggs. I'd like to open the floor open to public comment. If there are any questions or comments, probably should do the podium, since there's likely to be more than one.
People can't...
Maybe Ms. Rand could go first. Did you want to speak?
Go ahead.
Mine is more of a procedural question.
Yeah.
Get her in, 339 Billy Road, Tiverton.
Mine is more of a procedural question. As I understand, the motion last week could have been amended before the vote. And why wasn't that done, instead of having a separate meeting tonight, bringing everybody in for a special meeting? Why wasn't the resolution amended during that meeting? And why did we have to go to a special meeting to have it amended? And it could have been done right then and there, right?
I agree that that would have been another path to accomplish the same thing.
And much more efficient economically.
Well, one of the issues that we had is that we ended up taking a recess immediately after the vote, and we lost maybe two-thirds of the audience, and it was after, at that point, 10 o'clock at night, which of course, by our rules, the meetings end at 10 o'clock, unless there's two-thirds of a vote. And I'll take responsibility for it, but I was trying to be responsive to at least one or two members of the audience that wanted transparency and attendance. And knowing that we knew we were going to be here anyway for the Solicitor interviews, that was my decision on the special meeting, as far as whether to make a motion to amend rather than a new main motion. To me, that's sort of six of one and half dozen of the other, but I don't know if Councilor Driggs wants to comment on that.
Just, it's just, just my procedural question.
But that, that process, I believe, would have been in order as well, but for the late hour.
John Souza, Stonebilly Road. I wasn't here last week, so I'm here with a clean mind. What I heard Mrs. Driggs say is that we're going to follow the Rhode Island state law. Is that it in a nutshell?
There's nothing in this that says we're not going to follow any laws. Matter of fact, the body of the, the body of the resolution, which, which was in last week too, the last one, says, "Whereas the Tiverton Town Council members each took an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution, the Rhode Island Constitution, and the laws of the state of Rhode Island, which are not deemed unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, and the charter of the town of Tiverton." So that's, that's the assumption that we're going under.
What's the need for a resolution? I'm lost, I'm sorry.
That was the question.
If that's what's in the state law, why do we need a resolution to follow the state law?
As I believe Mr. Katz mentioned in proposing the resolution first last week, that the main purpose is to, for the Town Council to put on notice, a, on notice, this is where the town, what the town believes. The Town Council, the Town Council.
Well, could the Town Council say something else? That they didn't agree with the state law? They weren't going to follow it? That's what I'm, I'm just wondering why we're taking all this time to discuss something and vote on something that's already the state law? I'm sorry, I'm dense, maybe.
Hi, John. This is a message to the Smith, Smith Street, or the Capitol, that the General Assembly and the Senate should stop making mandates that interfere with constitutional rights. It's just putting them on notice, that we're not going to stand for it. It curtails constitutional rights by General Assembly mandates. That's what they're doing. They're doing, using the General Assembly to pass laws that mandate, which will cost the town as we go forward, if they do any curtailing of that amendment. It will then cost the town, because you'll get sued. It also costs any laws and mandates.
But what we say here has no bearing on what the legislature does.
But a...
We can, we can tell the legislature, what I'm getting from you is we're telling the legislature that we want them to follow the law.
Right, because they, they seem to not get the message. They keep trying to make laws that infringe on the Second Amendment. We're trying to tell them to stop.
But this has no power of anything, other than it's a resolution from the town of Tiverton to follow the state law.
But all, all resolutions do the same thing. They're just trying to let the legislature know what the interests are, or to stop making a law on something, or mandates, that's all resolutions are. They're not a law, it's just a message.
Seems like we're spending a hell of a lot of time on a message that doesn't really affect Tiverton, and we could be spending our time on a lot more important issues.
But it would affect Tiverton, it would affect people that... It affects the Second Amendment. It would affect everyone in Rhode Island.
Andrea Souza, South Avenue, I'm going to follow up on my dad. Go, go dad. So just as kind of a civics lesson, our country has been followed, our rules, for over 200 years. That hierarchy goes to the Constitution, federal law, state law, municipal law. If there is a conflict between one of those laws, the higher law supersedes the lower law. Meaning that if you put through this resolution, it's unenforceable. The state law says, through the red flag legislation, which is very particular, in that there has to be a probable cause that the police have to have, have to show, have to go to a judge and get a search warrant before they can even knock on a door. And if, if they get that search warrant, and if there is that probable cause, yes, they can take the firearms for a specific period of time. It is not a permanent confiscation of firearms. It's a temporary, because this individual or persons has shown a threat to themselves or their community, à la Parkland, à la what just happened in Virginia Beach. That's what this red flag does. It is not a permanent confiscation. If we pass this resolution, it has no teeth. The police still have to follow all the state laws of probable cause, of a search warrant, and they need it signed by a judge. State law is going to trump this. It has no teeth, it will have, it will not pass a legal challenge. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dan Dare, and I'm, I live at 1542 Main Road in Tiverton. My name is Dan Dyer, and I live at 1542 Main Road in Tiverton, two doors up from St. Christopher's Church, not on the water side. I'm here tonight. I did not have the opportunity to address this issue last week. I had only become aware of it, and I was, quite frankly, quite surprised when I understood that the motion had failed. But then I understood that that wasn't quite right because indeed, though it had failed, there was some sidebar conversation, and people had left, and then there was some, oh, I don't know. I don't know if anyone knows the term "sub rosa," that means under the covers or, you know, in a secret fashion. Some interesting discussion took place, and then people seemed to rework the, this, I don't know what to call it. I hesitate to call it a regulation. I want to call it a buffoonery or something like that. It's just totally absurd. The Second Amendment of the Constitution says a well-regulated militia being significant, and I paraphrase, to the citizenry, the right to have or bear arms shall not be infringed. And until recently, with Heller, with the Scalia Court, that conclusion was not in any kind of question, in any kind of legal fashion. So Mr. Scalia comes along and does indeed, Heller passes 5 to 4, Heller versus the District of Columbia. And even though it does say that people are entitled to some extent to the right to have arms in their homes for purposes of self-defense and other reasons, that right is not unlimited by any means. And even Mr. Scalia, with whom I would disagree about everything except that I like Italian food and opera, I think, we specifically quoted it as saying that none of the forebearing or following, aforementioned discussion limited in any way the right of the citizenry or right of the United States to control firearms in the United States. Now, I was interested in, and I'm going to kind of, I have a few thoughts here, so pardon me if I go from one to the other. I was interested in Ms. Driggs, who I guess is a licensed attorney in California, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island as well? Okay, well, that's interesting, as you're officer of the court and all that sort of thing. Do you recall the Boston Marathon bombing?
Yes.
Which would have been, what, three, four years ago, perhaps?
Of course I do.
I'm sorry?
Yes, of course I do.
Okay, 13. So maybe six years. Do you recall what happened in the end where the entire police force of the whole Western world was gathered in Watertown, and all of us were very grateful for that, when the accused was hiding out in that boat? Do you recall what happened at all? Did you happen to read the postmortem in regard to that?
We're not going to cross-examine.
No, no, pardon me. I'm trying to make a point, so please don't.
It's irrelevant what I remember. Why don't you state your opinion?
Okay, well, let me get to my point, if I will. Does anyone on this board or anyone in this room recall the postmortem of what happened that night?
Just tell us.
Well, every single police officer in the vicinity was loosing his weapon in the general direction of that particular boat. I don't know who conducted the postmortem, whether it was the Attorney General or whomever, but their conclusion was that the entire police force, the SWAT teams, everyone else, displayed no fire discipline, which means every single officer was firing his weapon at random in some particular direction with no particular aim in mind. It's the ready-fire-aim thing. And someone who was a commander in a command post finally had to say, cease fire. I was interested to listen to your argument, and I hear this all with gun rights people who say, oh, yeah, the only thing that can stop a bad person with a gun is a good person with a gun. Well, maybe that good person, maybe we ought to walk around with 12 gauges because that would work, but, you know, we'd do a little bit more damage as well. So in an instance where every police officer, state police officers of Massachusetts, Watertown Police Department, Boston Police Department, probably MIT, FBI, alcohol, tobacco, and firearms, all had their sidearms, their assault rifles out, all firing at random in several different directions, and they were trained. So please don't insult my intelligence by telling me that a good guy with a gun is going to stop a bad guy with a gun. Yeah, they stopped that guy, but they would have stopped the whole Russian army if it was standing in the middle of that thing because everybody was firing in every different direction. And it's lucky that the people in Watertown, you know, sheltered in place because there was so much lead flying around that, you know, somebody else would have been shot. And oh, by the way, this stuff does go through walls. 50 calibers can stop, you know, engine blocks. And, you know, 9 millimeters and others go through your wall. So if somebody discharges one of these things, it goes a long, long way, a mile or more. Anyway, that said, so I think that's kind of interesting. We do have a well-regulated militia in this state. It's called the National Guard. And as a matter of fact, every single male who is of age up to, between 18 and 45, is actually enrolled in the militia, whether he knows it or not, so that in time of crisis, that particular individual can be drafted, essentially. I think this whole ridiculousness is essentially a tyranny of the majority, if you will. I think if you polled this entire town, you'd probably find nine or 10 to one to thinking this whole thing is totally ridiculous, but this, you know, Tiverton Troglodyte Association has gotten in and has four votes on the town council, and they, all of a sudden, they're going to ram everything through that they think is worth ramming through. And in Mr. Katz's case, he works for the Center for So-Called Freedom and Prosperity, which is funded by the Koch Brothers, and one of whom's associates is this Alec, pardon me if I might, Alec Legislative Group. The nice people who brought you the stand, your grand laws. So, you know, we go through this, Mr. Zimmerman, who executed and murdered Trayvon Martin in Florida, in Sanford, Florida, was eligible to get his gun back after all of this. I just find this appalling. On military bases, people don't walk around with loose weaponry on military bases. The weapons are kept in armories, in arsenals, they're locked up, which is why when that dingbat at Fort Hood came in with his 9 millimeters and stuck him in, there was no, other than the police that would have been armed to stop him.
Probably need to do the three-minute thing, but.
Well, I have a couple more points, if I might. I was reading an article, I was reading an article about lead poisoning the other day. It's kind of a joke between people who bear arms because they say the person died of lead poisoning, which means they were shot. But there are people out there with ammunition in their bloodstream, not just shotgun pellets, but it turns out that we're going to steal ammunition so that we don't pollute the waterways, but we, for wild animal, for animal hunting and so on. But we don't use steel ammunition for people. We still use the old lead stuff. So there are people out there that have survived life-saving surgery but are walking around, and the lead is slowly leaching out into their bloodstream.
Let me just get to others in line, and if we have a little more time, we'll bring you back, but I got to let other people.
All right, well, I just have two quick comments. It's clear to me that this whole thing is a foregone conclusion, that you bozos are going to vote 4 to 3 for your ridiculous thing in the first place. It's like you guys have a hammer and you're in search of a nail. And finally, if I might, I wonder if Mr. Katz's employer is giving him a bonus for every one of these absurd right-wing nut jobs, things that he trots out every single time. I'm just absolutely appalled, and you can take that to the bank. Thank you.
I guess I should offer those taking personal attacks. Did you wish to respond?
It'd be kind of fruitless to do that.
Yeah.
I think I recognize you.
You do.
Can I just ask, did anybody that didn't speak last week, would you like to have speaking priority this week? Is that okay? I promise I will.
How you doing? John Murray. I live on West Mellow Drive in Tiverton. One of the things that Mrs. Cook had said is that this resolution is to send a message about the constitutionality of state law. Well, that's not the job of this town council. That's actually the job of the courts, to decide what's constitutional or not. You also have mentioned about preserving life. That's the, you know, that's the foundation on which the Declaration of Independence was mentioned, is to preserve life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. The purpose of this town council is, in effect, to preserve lives and property. You know, government is a necessary evil for that reason. It exists for that reason. The reason why we threw out the king was because, and the first reason presented by Thomas Jefferson was that he refused by assertive laws, the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. And so that's what this town council is trying to do with this resolution, is to set themselves up, apart from the will of the people. And if you really, truly believe that it's, the town would want this, then make it a resolution that's voted by the whole town in a general assembly, or a general election. But rather, you wish the small minority or majority wished to set themselves up, to send this message, one which is clearly not the will of the people. And I would hope that if you reflect upon that when you make your decision and your vote, and I hope that if you put this resolution through against the will of the people, that the will of the people votes you out, whether either by recall or through the general election. And thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. I'm Nan Haru. I'm a citizen of Newport County. I live in Middletown, and I'm representing the Coalition Against Gun Violence on behalf of the 123 Tiverton members that we have. I want to also thank Councilwoman Driggs for the phone call that we had. I felt it was very civil and very rewarding. I'm comfortable with the change that Councilwoman Driggs has suggested in that it says that the town of Tiverton hereby declares its support of the Second Amendment in opposition to infringement upon the right to bear arms. That is indeed the Second Amendment, and I will emphasize that the Coalition Against Gun Violence is not out to end the Second Amendment. We do, however, realize that it is not an unregulated right, as Justice Scalia so appropriately spoke in the Heller decision. I just have one question, and that is, how is a police officer to know when a law is unconstitutional and impacting the constitutional rights of citizens? Our laws are constitutional until a court of law rules that they are not. Does the officer wait for the court ruling before using sound discretion to decide whether or not to enforce them? Any police officer will tell you that their job is to enforce the law, not to interpret them. Now, to Councilwoman's point, an officer may decide whether or not someone is breaking the law, or if there is reasonable cause to arrest a suspect, but it is clearly not their role to use discretion about the constitutionality of the law. And I believe that's what the police chief was saying. He uses his discretion in terms of whether this person is breaking a law, not whether that law is unconstitutional. The resolution, therefore, appears to give the go-ahead to law enforcement to overstep their bounds and decide on the constitutionality of a law. Law enforcement will tell you that is not their job. The job is to protect the citizens of Tiverton or any town or city by enforcing laws enacted by the state's General Assembly. I strongly urge you to vote no. Thank you.
My name's Robert Church. I've been a resident of this town for 35 years. I grew up in this town. I know some of the people sitting before me here today. I want to thank you all for hearing this. It is a topic that has a lot of, let's say, built-up feelings in it. All you're looking at tonight is sending a message back to the state. The message you're sending back to the state is no more unfunded mandates, no more unfunded laws. There was something brought up earlier about storing weapons and who is going to pay that cost. Who's going to pay the cost on litigation if someone has their guns taken and decides to get a good Second Amendment lawyer and take this town to court? Is the state going to give you that money? Who's going to protect the town's interests? That's another question you have to look at. I personally am sick of the unfunded mandates that the state of Rhode Island throws out. We talk about common sense gun laws. The representatives that were at the State House met with the first responders that went to Sandy Hook. They were asked point-blank, any of the bills before you today, would any of them bills that we have, would it have stopped Sandy Hook? Everyone said, no. We need common sense, but it's more than with just guns. Thank you.
Keep your reading.
It's okay. I thank you, and I'm not going to repeat myself from last week, and it'll be brief. My name's Christine Bandoni, and I am a resident of Tiverton, and I emailed all of you, I think, last week. I think we can all agree that we'd like to see an end to gun violence, as Counselor Driggs said. And I think there are different opinions here on how to get there. It's a very complex issue. There isn't just one thing. I do believe we need to start talking to each other to solve this, and I don't believe these resolutions are a way to build bridges. The most recent laws passed in Rhode Island, which was the domestic violence gun bill and the red flag law, take guns away from dangerous people and don't infringe on law-abiding gun owners. Justin Katz shared his opinions about the red flag law. He seems to think it's an overreach and doesn't want to support storing these guns should they become confiscated. If I understand correctly, many people here in favor of this resolution will say it's the person, it's not the gun. Well, the red flag law certainly addresses that problem, taking guns away from people deemed dangerous to themselves or others. I have faith that our police chief will use his discretion in enforcing the law where appropriate and confiscate guns when necessary. I hope we find common ground someday so that our country doesn't continue to be listed on the top six countries with the most gun deaths in the world. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Maureen Morrow, and I, too, spoke last week, and I guess I have the full context of what's happening here tonight. So your choice of words, Councilman Coulter, about this is a different path, I think that's an interesting choice of words. You know, after the vote last week, it seemed as though this was a closed issue. And then there was a break, and there was some talk behind the desk, and then a new, you know, it was opened up again. So, yes, it's a new path. This is a rhetorical question, but if this resolution, which I want to make a couple of comments on, passes tonight, is this still going to be an open issue? Can somebody make a motion at a future meeting reversing it? I would assume yes. Okay. So I'm glad the word sanctuary has been removed. You know, if you just look up synonyms for the word sanctuary, there are various ones that are a little frightening, that we would think we were a town. Some of them are a refuge, a safe harbor, a safe house, a hideaway, an oasis. And these things would all kind of intimate, it's an oasis, from following the Constitution or following the laws of Rhode Island. So I understand what Mrs. Driggs has done here with this new resolution. She's taken the word sanctuary out. The preamble is still very pro-gun, and it cherry-picks from law. It doesn't include the entire Heller decision. But I guess what I want to say, similar to what Mr. Souza said at the beginning, is why are we singling out the Second Amendment to say we, as a town, are going to follow the Second Amendment? Are we going to now go down the line? Is there going to be an amendment of the month? And I'm actually, I'm not trying to be flip. I actually mean that. Why are we singling out the Second Amendment to say we're going to uphold that? The title also includes the infringement. Well, that's an opinion. There have been laws, as we went through in detail last week in front of many of the people in this audience, gun regulation is constitutional, and the courts decide. You may have the opinion otherwise and put that opinion in the title, but gun- You may have the opinion otherwise and put that opinion in the title, but gun regulation is constitutional. So, I really hope that this resolution is just put aside. In fact, I was hoping that a council member would make a motion that last week's vote stand. Thank you.
Jennifer Jones Rashley, Highland Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. This is my 20th year living in town. I am very disappointed in the issue that is up this evening and was up last week. Gun violence has only increased in our country year after year after year. Inviting a resolution that was first stated to create Tiverton, make Tiverton a sanctuary for gun hobbyists, there was a citizen in Tiverton, in the Siconnet Times likening the hobby collecting of guns to needlepoint. But it's much more serious than that. Two-thirds of gun deaths in the U.S. are by suicide. There are also more than 200,000 deaths by guns in the U.S. That, nearly a quarter million people in our country are dying by guns. I grew up in a family that, everyone in my family hunts. I, I'm from western Colorado. My parents were from Kansas. All of the Kansans hunted, and still do. But inviting a specific piece of legislation in our town that says, hey, come here and let's, let's be gunslingers. You can, you can be a happy gun collector in Tiverton. What that does is it invites a Virginia Beach, a Columbine, an Aurora, a Parkland, a Virginia Tech. I don't want a Sandy Hook. I don't want a Fort Barton. I don't want a Pecasset. I don't want a THS or a TMS in our town. Beginning this whole conversation with a sanctuary Second Amendment is, from the get-go, doublespeak. It's intentionally trying to kind of tease people that, oh, we are, we are a safe place. But guns are meant and used to kill people. Most death by guns isn't from hunting accidents. And people who are collecting guns and have a lot of guns at, at hand are using them on each other. Or, as the statistics prove out, people who own, people who are suicidal kill themselves with guns. As I said, I live on Highland Road. Several years back, one of my next-door neighbors, 15 feet from one of the bedrooms in my home, shot himself. That same year, one of my cousins took his life the same way. When I was in second grade, my best friend went over to play at another friend's house, and they went in the garage and got out their dad, his dad's collector pistols, and I never saw any of them again. One of my friends was shot, dead. He was a second grader. And the other kid, the family moved. I'd never even got to say goodbye. This is a mistake. And this is, this is a political intention to use the town of Tiverton as an example, and Justin, I do have to wonder if this is something that you've offered up from the Center for Freedom and Prosperity. This is not a piece of legislation that citizens in our town, I mean, look at the shirts in the room. I'm wearing blue for Virginia Beach today in mourning. This is the wrong thing to do, to call sanctuary to the Second Amendment. I think it's fine to have a gun to go hunting, but to, to say, oh, rah rah, Tiverton, let's collect guns and come here and let's be gunslingers. We invite you. We welcome you. That's a problem. We don't need a Sandy Hook. We don't need a Fort Barton. We don't need a Pecasset. We don't need a Ranger. You guys have, are taking this as an issue out of your own political deck of cards, but this is not an issue that the citizens of Tiverton have been knocking at your door to create and pass. You're using your political seat to express a political opinion, but it's not what the town is asking you to do.
My name's Bob Taylor, and I am a resident of Tiverton. So that everybody knows what I'm here for, all right? I'll do my best.
He just needs help, just.
Is that better? My name's Bob Taylor, and I am a resident of Tiverton. I'm sorry, I could.
No, no, go ahead.
Just, I'd like to set everybody straight, knowing what I am for and against. I'm not a TAA person, a gun advocate, or an affiliate with any political group. I'm simply a Tiverton resident who cares deeply about the town. You should know that I do own weapons. I'm here to present my feelings on the hot subject of the night, the Second Amendment. Approximately 270 years ago, the Second Amendment was written giving us the right to bear arms. What were considered arms back then? Basically muskets. Is there any gun advocate here knowledgeable about black powder weapons that will tell me about how long it would take someone to load and fire? Three rounds with a brown vest? Anybody?
Twenty seconds, I think.
So, about a minute, sir?
For three rounds.
For three rounds, fine. They weren't very accurate. Okay. Now, how many rounds could one fire with a modern assault rifle in the same time? Would you know that?
An automatic, a full automatic?
Yes, a modern assault rifle, yes.
Six hundred rounds a minute.
Okay, we're going from three rounds to 600 rounds a minute. That ought to tell you something, folks.
It wasn't military, that's military, sir.
All right, let's get, let's get weapons that are available to anybody in town.
All right, take that.
Okay. I'm going to go three to 600. That's what I was told, okay? Gun control is needed, not guns being banned, but control is needed. We all know what happened in Virginia City the other day. What would this place look like if it happened here? It only takes one mentally disturbed person for that to happen, and do you guys want that on your conscience? I sure as hope not. Before the meeting started, I asked Mrs. Hilton if she would read the pledge that she read last week. Is it necessary, the pledge that she took when she became a town councilor? Do I do you all understand that? Did you listen? I don't think half of you did, but that's neither here nor there. Did you? I'm going to start at one end and go to the other. I'd like a yes or no answer.
I'm sorry, you don't have to cross-examine councillors. I'm not even trying to understand the question, but maybe.
The question is, the question is, did you all take the same pledge Ms. Hilton took? And if so, your, your vote should be seven to nothing as to how many took that pledge. All I can tell you, folks, is you ought to do what you're supposed to be doing. You got to stand by the pledge and do what you're told, what you, what the pledge says. And we do need gun control. We don't need guns banned, we need gun control. Thank you.
Might be our last, I don't know if you're our last speaker? Go ahead.
I guess I better make it good, huh?
We have one more behind you.
Okay, good. Thank goodness. My name's Gary. It's my first meeting. I just moved up to Tiverton as my first get-together with the city council. I just wanted to say that I'm not into the specifics, but I respect the Second Amendment, and I would like to be able to, maybe overly simplistic, but I'd like to be able to defend myself in my home or in any situation where my family needs protection. And I'm watching you, sir. Don't be looking at that phone. Okay. I just wanted to make it simple that I agree that whatever rights that we have given from the Second Amendment, I'd like to keep them. I know there's lots of reasons why people have difference opinions. Don't need to call people names or anything like that, but I'd like to keep what we have. I know it's, we'll never be anywhere else in the world where always the U.S. and gun, being able to have guns and everything like that is an important right that's given to us from the very beginning. And I'd like to be able to use it to protect myself and my family when things come up, and I think it's a safe community. And I wanted to thank you for your time, and appreciate it.
My name is Bill Jenkins. I'm a resident of Tiverton. I have one substantive question for you. You've included a statement that the chain of command will be in charge. You didn't define chain of command. Does the administrator decide? Does the police chief decide? Does Robert Coulter decide? Why didn't you define it, and why did you include it?
Can I ask you that specific question?
Justin included. Well, I'll tell you, I mean, there's an existing chain of command, and that's what it would mean. We're not looking at.
What is the existing chain of command when it comes to guns?
Well, I mean, for, for town policy, you would start with the officer, the superiors, the police chief, the administrator, the council. That's town policy. I just, the idea behind that particular phrase is to say, this isn't an invitation for the person on the ground to make up new rules, there is a chain of command.
So, the town council decides to tell the chief what he can do when he's enforcing laws?
Absolutely not.
What are you talking about?
Absolutely not.
What is the chain of command?
In a general framework, that's the chain of command. I mean, however, whatever the rules that we have to follow to do something, that's the chain of command. There's no, there's no intention to make this some kind of a loophole where we can suddenly write new laws that aren't applicable.
Why then did you put that phrase in this petition?
As an assurance that it isn't an attempt to disrupt the order of command in the town or in the police department.
Are we done? I'd like to say something. We're coming in on two hours, and this is our second meeting, and I might suggest, this might be the last quick comment, and then we will.
I'm going to be like 30 seconds.
That's okay. No, take, take the time you'd like. I just want to.
That's all. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Driggs for removing the word sanctuary from the resolution, because I don't think that.
I just need your name for the representative.
Oh, Tim Conick, 15 Salisbury Street, Tiverton. No, I'm fine with giving you my address. I, I live here. I've lived here for 20 years. I'm, I'm the gun collector that you're so worried about, by the way. None of my guns have ever harmed anyone and ever will. My godchild hung herself, didn't need a gun. So, what are we going to do? Outlaw ropes? Thank you. Gun laws don't work. They don't stop anyone. This is a resolution, not a law. It's not going to change what the police chief does, so I don't know where all the rest of this rhetoric comes from. Thank you.
Why do we need it then?
Yes, good evening.
Instructions are followed.
Is it okay, is it okay, Mr. Coulter?
It's fine. You weren't here last week.
I wasn't here last week. I was at my meeting.
I'm going to make it by you, because I know you'll appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'll be quick. Sally Black, we're living here 72 years. So, I, I look around the room, I watch the show so I could get the background. I couldn't, I could not, no. I read in the papers, and I, I understand. I, I see the yellow shirts, and I see the red shirts, and I understand how everyone feels. Bless you. And I wear my black tonight, much like Mr. Rashley, in honor of all the people, the children, the adults, everyone that has met with this. I know everyone in this town loves this town. They love this country. We obey the Constitution, accept the First Amendment because of 1218, but we'll go on that another night. So.
We're doing side work, this is.
Yeah, okay.
I'll take it away.
So, anyway, no, I, I really, I really know that we love, and I want to all get together. We can all get together and send messages to everyone, not just to, you know, Providence, we can send them to Washington, but we have to all get together, because I know no one agrees with what's going on. And every time you turn the television on, and everyone sends up their thoughts and prayers, and we need more than that. We need action, and we need all to get together and work on this. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Move the question.
I just want to say something. Obviously, I voted no the other night, and I'm going to vote no tonight, but I really want to recognize and put this on the record that we did get a petition signed by 86 people in town against this amendment, and I'd like to read it for the record. "As a resident of Tiverton, I expect the town council to focus on issues of importance to the operation of our town, not passing resolutions designed to increase strife regarding this sensitive topic. Constitutional issues are remedied by courts, and our town is obligated to abide by the rules of the state of Rhode Island, regardless of personal feelings or political inclinations. Please vote no on this resolution to make it clear that the town of Tiverton respects the rule of law and does not engage in divisive, empty rhetoric." And it's signed by 86 Tiverton residents. And I know that Justin has said that people have approached him, well, we've been approached within the last four days by 86 residents that say no. And I think it's very important to put this on the record. I do agree that this resolution means nothing, that we cannot tell the chief of police what to do. He has to follow rules, and if we do try to tell him what to do, we are interfering per charter. And I think it's really irresponsible to even try to tell him what to do. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions from councillors? Those wishing to speak in opposition will have priority. Floor is open.
Yes, no?
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Joe. So, I voted no last week, and I'll also be voting no against tonight, and I'm not going to go through in great detail what I said last week, other than my deep concern with the concept of sanctuary cities, period, because I fundamentally think that they are a threat to the constitutional process and the process of the legislative and executive branches versus the judicial branch. And I do recognize the right that the founding fathers gave us, that if, if we feel aggrieved by laws that are passed, the judicial branch is there to make sure that those laws are constitutional. And I respect anybody's right to challenge any law that's passed, whether it's at the state or the local level, to ensure it passes that test. And, you know, I, I did mention the oath that we all take, and that oath doesn't say anything about defending the Constitution. It says uphold, abiding by and upholding the laws, and I think that that's important. And as far as, you know, last week's events go, I found it rather unsettling how this all came about. This draft is somewhat different than what was mentioned as the issue by Mrs. Driggs when there was an attempt to have a second vote, so I admit I find that a little confusing as well. But I think the part of this new resolution that worries me the most is actually that language that was mentioned regarding the chain of command. And it says, "Be it further resolved that consistent with the policies of the town and its police department and the chain of command, the Tiverton Town Council affirms its support for the exercise of sound discretion." This actually, if you truly believe in the Constitution, I find this even more alarming than. than the last one. There is no chain of command here from the council to the police department. There are two things that specifically prevent us from in any way, shape, or form from interfering with the police department and their obligation to uphold the law as the law is written. First off is, is Section 902 of the Charter, which makes it very, very clear that we are not to, no one in the town is to interfere with, with police business. And when I say police business, I mean the police's responsibility to uphold the law, not to interpret the law, not to maybe say, "Well," but to uphold the law according to the established law as well as established legal precedent. The second is the non-interference clause. The idea that there's a chain of command that goes from the council to the administrator to the police, that's not really how it works here, folks. And I know that sometimes people think the council has way more power than we do. We don't. There's a non-interference clause in the Charter that says, "We are not to, except for purposes of inquiry," in other words, to get information, "we are not to interfere ever with the operation of any department in this town, including the police department, unless we go through the administrator." But the administrator is not bound to follow any direction that we necessarily give. We can set policy, we can say, you know, "We're gonna have this many policemen," or "We wanna buy this kind of cruisers," or "We're gonna fund this this year," but in terms of the actual operation, we're a lot more like a board of directors than we are a boss. And the town administrator has the authority, if he so desires, not to follow a, a direction that we give if he thinks that it's counter to the law. We can't, for example, hire and fire people. I know a lot of people, that we have a new fire chief that was just hired, and there were a bunch of people that said, "Oh, good for the council, that's great, that was a great hire." Well, the truth is, the council didn't hire him. We don't have that authority. The town administrator alone has that authority. The only thing that we can do is ratify the contract, nor can we fire anybody. So, we... Except the town administrator. Only the town administrator can fire a department head. We can't. We're specifically precluded from interfering. And that especially goes for the police department based on 902. So, this language in here that somehow intimates that there's a chain of command, and, and that's, think about that, that's a really scary thing, that somehow a government entity is going to be giving some level of direction or has any authority to give any level of direction to law enforcement? I'm sorry, but if you really love the Constitution, you cannot love that idea. It is...
Is that called a police state?
It, it, so, again, I'm even more alarmed than this, and frankly, I know that the police chief said this in the past, I, I believe it when he said it. Was it something? Oh, sorry. That we just don't have a right to interfere with the police's execution of their job. So, I, I, again, if I wasn't crazy about the, this resolution the last time, I'm really not crazy about it this time. And the last thing that I will ask my fellow councillors, and there may well be a majority of four people who are gonna vote from, for this based on the events of last week, but in addition to these 80 signatures here, I have a passel, you know, almost 30 emails in my email box that are handwritten, that are separate. I have a whole pile of phone calls, voicemail, because somebody gave out my cell phone number. And you know what the truth is? Every single one of them is in opposition to this resolution. I have exactly one in support of this resolution, and it's from a person who doesn't live in Tiverton. So, I really do not necessarily believe that the majority, there, there may be a sizable group, but I do not believe that the majority of the town is supporting this resolution. And, and it may be that it's a majority of the council that's going to support this. So, if four of you wanna pass this, and, and you really wanna do the right thing, what you should change this to is majority of the council, not the town council, a majority of the town council, and leave out references to the town itself and, and to the rest of us. That's really what I think, if you're insistent on going forward with it, and that's your opinion, then stated is your opinion. But it's definitely not mine.
My, my feeling is the same as it was last week. I don't feel we should be making a decision for the good of the town of Tiverton. Councilor Cook stated tonight that she wanted to do what was in the best interest of the people, and I think the right way to do it is to put it on the ballot, let the people vote instead of seven of us making a decision, let the majority of the town decide.
I'll just, first I wanted to suggest that Counselor Hilton described the chain of command, and this resolution actually affirms that we support that. The restrictions the Charter imposes on the council are part of that chain of command. That's, this resolution says we're gonna do that, so it's not the opposite of what it says, it is what it says. I agree with those who've wondered why we're spending so much time on this, because it seems pretty obvious to me. In fact, people, nobody actually knocked at my door, but pretty close, asking for this resolution to pass. And if some residents talk to some councillors and others talk to others, that's how the seven people represent a town overall. The state government has a tendency to overstep its bounds, and some of our residents have asked us to voice their objection. Why the Second Amendment? The Second Amendment is uniquely threatened by the politics of our day. If there are, if people in town are concerned about First Amendment rights and they want a resolution, I will be happy to hear about resolutions for First Amendment rights or the other rights. I think senators should be appointed by the state government, but I don't know if the townspeople really care about that one. If we pass this resolution, it harms nobody else's rights. It answers a felt need of many of our constituents, and it harms nobody. And in fact, just talking about this resolution, as Counselor Driggs mentioned earlier, caused one of the bad bills to be removed from consideration. So, the most persuasive argument I've heard was the residents who didn't wanna be labeled a sanctuary town. Well, Counselor Driggs' amendment or change or new, new version takes that out. So, I, I will be supporting this again, well, again for the first time, and that's all I have to say.
You two moved it, so, again, am I gonna last word, or do you have anything else?
No, I just would, I would also like to reinforce what Mr. Katz just said, that the, I'm not, I don't quite get what the confusion is, but the resolution is consistent with the policies of the town and its police department and the chain of command, the Tiverton Town Council. It can't be clearer that we're following the policies of the town, the chain of command listed in the town, the police department chain of command, et cetera. So, I don't have a problem.
So, why are you even changing?
Do we have a motion?
We do have a live motion, just my comments, and I'll try to be brief. I am a bit concerned here, you know, just trying to moderate this, this meeting at the sort of, again, the personal attacks and these accusations that these are sub rosa. This was a noticed agenda item at the draft in advance, it had an hour and a half of debate, most of that debate was very, very well articulated in good faith. And at the request of some citizens, we carried it over to a future this meeting, which is well-attended and covered by professional and amateur media. And public comment has been allowed, even though it is not a formal public hearing, so to speak. And, so, to me, I feel like this is democracy in action, right? It's not possible for every single policy question to go to a track vote of the people. Although I am very supportive of this concept, and we're going to have more conversations about, we can't put every single decision that we make to a vote of the whole town of 11,000 or 12,000 voters, so we have to do some decisions, and it's not feasible that every single decision is a unanimous vote, although despite what you may have heard, I think over 90% of our votes are six or seven oaths. So, we're not going to label every single, we're not gonna label every single vote that's non-unanimous as being just that majority that day. This is an elected democratic process, and I don't, and I, I keep hearing people say things that this resolution does. Half of you say it does nothing, and if it does nothing, then there really should be no objection, other than the cost in time, which I think is really the, one of the things on my mind. I will say that I, you may remember when we first started, that we had a gentleman, Mr. Fran Provost, who was trying to get support from the town council solution to make this town a sanctuary city, those were his words, for immigration. And he had not one but two hearings in front of this body, he was able to sit here, and he got a vote. I don't think he succeeded in that vote, but I also invited him to come back with further legal analysis, and I told him that I would personally sponsor that. So, I'm here to tell you that if there are, and any honest assessment of this, we'll see bodies all over the state, including our school board, that also takes resolutions in support of things, whether they're binding or not. This is not some new thing. It's a very, very sensitive issue. And if Mr. Provost comes back with his First Amendment or with the immigration, or if any of you have other ones, the only thing that holds us back from talking about it is just simply time constraints. And that's why we've done things that look like administrative details, but asked that you ask for how much time you want to debate something, so that we can try to squeeze it in. If it has the support of a councillor, as you can see, it tends to have more time. I just wanna talk about the process point of view, and that's all that I, that's all that I have to add. Thank you. Is there any objection to proceeding directly to a vote? Hearing on, we have a live motion and a second to pass the new resolution entitled "Resolution Supporting the Second Amendment and Opposing Infringement of the Right to Bear Arms." I will not read the entire preambulatory recitals, and I think Mrs. Driggs has outlined the, the changes from last week, which got extensive conversation. All those in favor of the resolution as presented? Are there any opposed? Very well, thank you. I'm not going to take a recess, so, continue on. Quite seriously, we are talking about the First Amendment and sign word, it says later, so, which, you know, the First Amendment's pretty important, too. But first, we're gonna talk about the employee code of conduct, and this is sponsored, I believe, by Counselor Cook and Counselor Driggs.
Thank you, President Coulter. I have had the, quite a few union representatives... They have a lot of questions regarding this possible ordinance, and I don't think it's unreasonable, so I don't know if I have to make a motion, or just, I would like to have a meeting with the solicitor, Nancy, who's worked with me, the town administrator, myself, and union presidents to sit down and talk about the draft. For questions and answers, so that they feel comfortable with the language in the document, if that would be okay.
Have the, with just the municipal, our labor teams from the municipal side, or our fire, police, teachers, and...
I don't know, Sally, do you think it should be those, other side also?
Please, what?
But we don't have anything to do with the school department. Yeah, it's just municipal.
You got enough going on?
Yeah, well, plenty.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to check that out.
Okay, so this is just an update only, and is there any objection from the council for that to proceed administratively? Need a formal vote?
No.
Any objection? Okay. Any further questions or comments on this agenda item? We're on 5B. Okay. Looking, oh, looking the page. We are off to the town clerk. This is something I think she's been looking for for a long time, coming. Where are we here? We are considering the appointment of a deputy town clerk. She's come loaded to bear with statutory citations, basically telling us we have no choice, right? Well, well presented.
I wouldn't phrase it like that. But I have mentioned a person for this who I already spoke with. She's actually a temporary worker right now, but she has worked in the clerk's office twice for about two to three months each time. She's covering now in the building official's office. I've had nothing but good comments towards her. I think she's very much aware that the position follows the clerk and can be revoked at any time. Another clerk comes into play, and she knows it's non-union, when there are definitely union positions available now, but she has opted to go this way instead. She's, seems to be satisfied with it. I'm asking that it be a 35-hour-a-week position, probably a nine to five, because often I'm here after four, and we can get a little more work done at that point. I've attached a contract that the town administrator has seen and has also gone through Attorney Cavazza, the Labor Council. He has reviewed it and put his comments in there as well. The only thing I feel strong about in the contract as well is that the educational money to be able to have $500 a year when funds are available for it, and that's to try to get her municipal certified, because I think it's important that we get certified in those positions now. And basically, she would have the rights that I have in my absence, or whatever clerk is in place.
Okay. The floor is open for discussion or for any motions. We have requests approved?
I'd like a motion, we approve Jeanne M. Veek as deputy clerk.
Second? Motion, and second, floor is open. Any questions, comments? Anything from the public? This did have some discussion on our Charter Review Commission, that came up earlier today.
Yeah, I wanted them all certified, municipal certified. Is that what you mean? Certification, yeah, okay.
Nancy, I just have a question. I know the, both budgets, and obviously the one I won, included the funding for this position, right? And you're starting it before the end of this fiscal year, so I assume there are...
Yes, I'm sorry. Since this was on the prior meeting, I was hoping to start her in that position as of May 31st. She's been covering full-time in the building official's office, and I'll try to keep her going as much as I can there, as, as well as start training her on our end. But, yes, I would have liked to have started her on May 31st, and with the absence of a clerk in our office, I would have the revenue. She has asked for a week off in June, since she'd be starting full-time. She realizes that week is without pay, and I don't have a problem with that.
So, there are funds in this year's budget that can cover it?
There are funds in this year, in next year's budget, it's all listed under my, under staff, if that's me, but it's, it will cover this, yes.
And just for point of clarity, I, it probably doesn't matter, I'm just curious, is this, is there overtime in this, or is it effectively a salaried position?
No, it's not a salary position, because there's too many night meetings to put a salary at that, at that amount. But what she has agreed to, and it's in the contract, is that she would have, the first council meeting of each month would be a split shift for her. She could either come in at 1:00, leave and come back at night, so that first council meeting would not create any overtime. But any other council meetings that she attends, yes, she has to be compensated for them.
And that would be the overtime we're paying to somebody right now?
We're paying overtime right now, yes. This, this actually may cut down a little bit on the overtime, but the salary is a dollar or so more an hour.
Would she have a choice of comp time instead of overtime?
That's a choice that any of the employees have right now, but we don't issue a lot of comp time. of comp time. We, I generally allow enough so that if somebody had to leave early, they, and they've worked all the time for it. But remember, when you give comp time, or you give overtime, it's that time and a half. So often, my problem in there is covering the staff. So we don't allow, there's no one that accumulates a lot of comp time in the town that I know of.
Okay, we have a live motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. Any objection to proceeding to a vote? Hearing none. All those in favor of the request as requested? Unanimous. See?
Should have gone fifteen years ago.
Thanks for aligning all that up. All right, moving right along.
That was the appointment, we'll not get the ratification.
Oh, we're not done yet. Okay. You want another vote on the, that was a one-part motion.
I'll move the ratification of this non-union contract.
All right. Good. Going for another unanimous vote here. All those in favor?
I think I'm going to vote no, just some.
We have a bevy of budget transfers. I keep trying to get them on the consent agenda, if they're under ten thousand, but every time, they seem to sneak on to ten thousand. Mr. Administrator, why don't you lead us all the way down the line here with your staff?
Actually, the first one is a request by Acting Chief Rammels for the Fire Department, where I think we all know, in recent history, we've incurred an awful lot of pretty high expenses for apparatus maintenance and repair. And therefore, we are quite short in that particular account. So the, an effort has been made to locate money within the Fire Department budget, working also with the treasurer, to transfer money into the apparatus maintenance account, for a total of thirty thousand dollars, to hopefully cover us through the rest of this fiscal year. And Bruce can give any further clarification, if you wish it.
I'd like to make.
Go in place.
But we believe, we believe. I'd like to make a motion to transfer twelve thousand five hundred from account thirty-three ten dash fifty-one hundred, chief salary five hundred from account thirty-three ten sixty-four forty-three, equipment service contract six hundred from account thirty-three ten sixty-nine twenty-eight, firefighting training. Five thousand from account thirty-three ten seven-six-one, fuel, oil and tires. Forty-five hundred from thirty-three ten seventy-fourty, station maintenance. Three thousand from account thirty-three ten sixty-six forty-eight, minor equipment repairs. Two thousand from account thirty-three ten seventy-three twenty-two, personal and protective gear. Nineteen hundred from account twenty-one ninety seventy-nine twenty, town buildings per property insurance, to account thirty-three ten seven-six-five four oh, apparatus maintenance, totaling thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.
I'll make the most.
Thank you very much.
I may just make one comment on this. I think I may have mentioned it at the last meeting, but certainly, it has given us pause to get these amounts needed for repair. And the whole notion of needing repairs is often, and for these kinds of amounts, is something that we're taking seriously. So we are working on a preventive maintenance strategy, working with DPW, as well as the Fire Department, potentially with the Police Department as well. And the new chief is very focused on this. So I just wanted to acknowledge that it's not an issue that we just want to take for granted.
Can I just ask the administrator one question? There was a rescue that was sitting at Station Two outside. Is that the two thousand and eight that needed a motor? Is that the one that's?
I believe that's the one that, yeah.
That needs a motor, the two thousand and eight?
The two thousand and twelve Rescue One is the one that's getting the motor rebuilt right now. The one that was outside of Station Two was the oh-eight, that was Rescue Three, that's the one we had to take the, equip the new rescue that's coming in. That's why it was up there.
I need another question. It looks like a, it looks like a brand, is that the new one? There, it looks like there's a new.
There was.
Rescue. It doesn't have a name on it. Yeah.
That is, that is the new one. It was here, brought here by the company for the past, over the weekend, so we could stop mounting all the equipment.
All right.
He did come and take it today. He asked him out to stretcher and some of the radios, and we should be getting it back towards the end of the week.
And there will be lettering on it.
And there definitely will be lettering. Tivon, not Little Compton, not Portsmouth, not Bristol, not.
I just thought it was going to be smaller. It looks like it's the same size as the other. I don't, I don't know.
It's smaller.
It's smaller?
It's definitely smaller.
The one I saw was smaller. Yeah, it didn't have the lettering I saw.
Well, I just thought it was going to be the same size as the Little Compton one. Little Compton's small.
The box, the box itself is the same size, like the patient compartment is the same size.
Uh huh.
So the truck itself is smaller, quite a bit smaller, the cabin chassis.
Okay, thank you. It's a nice little thing.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. President, oh. What, Lauren, I wanted to be appropriate, I just wanted to know, just the mechanics of paying for that rescue, the new rescue, was, did we end up paying for it? Are we paying for it on July first? What was the?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
The payment of the new rescue, just the mechanics of, where are we with that?
Are we paying for it next year or this year? That's, on which budget, that's what Justin's.
The treasurer says it's essentially an accounting measure. So it can be paid this fiscal year, it will be charged against next fiscal year's account.
Okay.
And it will be happening sooner rather than later. We're not necessarily going to wait until July first.
Can I just make motions here, or do we?
Is it, I guess since it's ninety-five degrees in here, we're pretty sure snow's all been being removed?
Yeah, I mean, I trusted these, in a minute.
Could you leave out D?
You don't want to do D?
Yeah, I'm actually going to withdraw that for the time being, I can explain why, but.
Both of them, or just one of them? Well, there's two.
D, which is.
Entirely D.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, just the ten thousand.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we, you want to take B and C together?
Yeah, I'll just make motions. I'd like to make a motion to transfer seventy-five hundred from account fifty-four forty dash sixty-four fifty-one, snow removal to account fifty-five forty, fifty-one oh-two, clerks pay. I'd like to make a motion, I'll do both, fourteen thousand from account eleven forty to dash sixty-four fifty-one, snow removal to account fifty-four forty seventy-six one one, fuel, oil and tires.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to transfer ten thousand dollars from account ten twenty seventy-one fifty-two, council advertising ordinance comp plan. Four thousand dollars from account ten twenty sixty-eight ninety, council contingency, to account ten twenty sixty-nine fifty-four, council advertising ordinance totaling fourteen thousand dollars. Second.
All those in favor?
I'd like to make a motion to transfer sixteen thousand dollars from account ten fifty seventy-one ninety-five, zoning code review and rewrite to account ten fifty dash seventy-one ninety-one, Labor Council.
Second.
Discussion? I have a question. So on that, is this the account that we went out to RFP for? We went out to RFP a while ago to hire somebody to help them with the zoning code rewrite.
Oh, yes.
Is this that account?
Is that account, because we know that the money that was appropriated for this fiscal year is not going to be, at least not completely spent on that.
But did we hire somebody?
No. As far as I know, we, or did we solicit?
We started the process, and, and the intention was this week to bring in the supporting lawyers to finish everything through June. So we have a strategy to complete the steps that we can complete by the end of the year. But I'm working on responding to those attorneys this week. So the expectation is that there will be some time that those attorneys will bill in June.
And how much is left in that account, then, if we're transferring sixteen thousand dollars out of it?
I think it was thirty, yeah, there was thirty in that account, I believe. So there's about fourteen left.
Okay, so, but is there funding, then, for the rest of it in the next fiscal year? I don't remember.
I believe there's some, yeah.
There's some.
There's an additional fifteen thousand, I believe, in the new budget.
Can I just ask Susan for a second? Do you, do you know? Do you know what next year's funding is for this?
I think fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen.
I think.
My question was, I know, I thought that this went out to advertising, and I thought they had responses. I'd inquired several times for follow-up, but as far as I know, I don't know if you answered, that those solicitors that applied were never interviewed. And the thing is that now, I guess some work is under, gone under. I had submitted kind of my top ten list of concerns to Jan, that I was asked to do, areas to address, and there's been no interaction with the planning board, or with myself, on any work that's been done. And I've just been concerned, because this thirty thousand dollars was put aside in the budget specifically for the zoning revisions, to bring in compliance with the comp plan. It went out to advertising, they were never interviewed, and I've been asking since February for follow-up, because I knew at the end of this fiscal year, that that thirty thousand dollars was going to go away. And I know.
So who's doing this work?
Right now, we're doing it. The intent, and I haven't discussed with Jan.
But are you doing, so here's a question, because now I'm confused. Are you doing comp plan work, or are you doing, or are you doing other zoning code work?
We are, we are doing the, the work that was budgeted for this year.
But is it?
In order to take the planning, in order to bring things in conformance with the new comprehensive plan, is, I think that's what you're asking.
So this is comp plan work?
And so.
No, Jan shaking his head, it's not comp plan.
It is, but that's not what we're really talking about.
Yeah, that's what the funds were set up for, was to bring the zoning code into compliance with the comp plan.
Exactly. It's a review of the, oh.
And I didn't know if GEO was one of the firms that applied.
Yes, no, we are, we are overseeing this, as we've discussed at prior meetings, but we, but we brought in specialized, the intent was to bring in some specialized legal help that had some bandwidth in, in the short term, to get something done by the end of June. So the intent was to, we've been checking references and talking to folks who know the lawyers that applied, to see what the best fit might be, but we haven't had the need to bring them in yet. But the thought would be that within the next thirty days, we would, we would finish at least that component of, you know, the preliminary work. We will not have necessarily ordinance proposals by the end of June. And I think we indicated that at a prior meeting, that this will require some back-and-forth, some meetings, some public workshops, and obviously, those aren't going to get done by year-end. But the intent was between this budgeted amount, plus the amount that was in next year's budget, we could have proposals to bring you fully in conformance with the comp plan by, you know, mid-third quarter.
I thought that, I thought the whole, whole idea was to, to have a.
Can we just have one on the clock, please? Can we just hit reset? So this is a request to transfer funds. Is the concern that we want to reserve these funds for this work to be rolled over?
Well, we could do that if we.
Because this sounds like a whole other agenda item.
Well, the whole idea was that, which, it was to sign a contract with somebody in order to, I thought that's how it was set up, was to have the thirty thousand dollars that the, that it went out to advertise by RFP, and then those people should have been interviewed, and, and then a contract would have been signed. And that's why I had been asking where we were in the process, because my thing was to encumber the funds by June thirtieth for that contract, and that's never processed.
If I may, there was a discussion in the town council meeting as to how this would proceed. My expectation was exactly the way Sue said. That was the original plan, to have an outside attorney being hired, especially to complete this work. GEO proposed to do it with his firm, and maybe, as necessary, hire someone for that purpose.
But who did you propose that to?
That was, that was approved. That's what you went along with.
This was like the mini pre-work? Was it the mini pre-project before we go all in?
I wouldn't say mini. I think, I don't think it's going to cost, yeah, no, no, no. I don't, I don't think it would necessarily be even as much as it would be in this current year, next year. I think that's why the fifteen thousand for next year seemed to be adequate, although we can't promise. It depends on how much back and forth is necessary. But the, what we were authorized to do, after some discussion with the council here, was to go ahead and bring on those attorneys as needed, based on the responses from the RFP. And so we have, we have started, started the preliminary work, based on the planning board's input, as Sue mentioned, but also just based on our own review of the comp plan and the state law, and what needs to be brought into conformance. And then what we're intending to do is to bring in the outside counsel to help crank out the work, as it were, over the next few weeks, so that we give you a deliverable, or at least as close as we can to one to review, maybe by the end of this month. And that way, then, you can give us further guidance as to how to continue into the next quarter and get these things done. It's not an overwhelming process. We can get this done in a reasonable amount of time. We have good input from the planning board, and we will certainly solicit more input before anything is finalized, and obviously, come back to the council with all the changes that you'll be required to vote on. So it's basically a process to deliver you a stack of ordinance changes that will, will solve this compliance problem.
So, may I just, so have you discuss, have you discussed with the planning board the priority? There's been some discussion here of what the priority is in terms of tackling these?
The planning board presented resolutions that indicated their priorities, but we haven't gone back and had a further discussion, because we haven't looked at it ourselves. We haven't completed the review to see what else might be, need to be brought into conformance. So, so we'll come back with a laundry list, and, and whether it's you or the planning board, I'm indifferent to that. We're, we're just telling you what legally you need to do to come into conformance, and then you can prioritize however you wish.
Okay, I have one more question. My worry, first of all, you know, we were, we adopted a comp plan, we're supposed to be moving forward on it, and as best I can tell, we still haven't gotten actually anything concrete done on the comp plan. That's what it sounds like to me, not a single thing in the whole bloody document. But the other problem with all of this is that there are a small number of things in that comp plan that are easy ordinances. In other words, this is a no-brainer, somebody can write it. A lot of what is in that document is going to take thought and community input, and possibly, you know, and, and outside, not an outside lawyer, but an outside planner. So for example, when we talk about the whole waterfront, what do we do about, about the waterfront, and being able to generate more revenue from the waterfront, and make it more accessible to people, and all that other kind of stuff? Like, that's not a, that's not a, like, something where the, a lawyer writes an ordinance. So I'll let this go for now, but I am worried about losing this money, because the people who can do this cost money, and we may need to hire them. But I would like to then get on the agenda as soon as possible, a real honest-to-God status of where we are on the comp plan, and who we're paying, and how we're spending this money. Because no, with all due respect to you, I don't understand why we're paying you if we're going to be hiring, you're going to be bringing in outside people. That seems too, a little superfluous to me.
Well, I think in the discussion from the last meeting was that in order to accelerate this process, and to make sure that we didn't simply drag our feet through the rest of this fiscal year, we may need to bring in other expertise. And, and there honestly were some good opportunities to bring in, you know, another set of eyes, people that have served on, on, on planning boards, and have done rewrites, and some things that you might not have access to, except for the opportunity to bring in some of these third parties. But you don't necessarily need to have them run the process either, so, so if you want to move it quickly, I think this was the way to make it happen. And I, I heard from the planning board, in my attendance at their meetings, that they were concerned that it was not happening quickly. And so this was a solution to that, that, that concern.
Well, I'll just ask to have this on an agenda, or maybe we can have an update meeting, and I'm the liaison to the planning board, so maybe I need to go over there to and ask. But in the meantime, I have to say, if there's any chance we can hold off on transferring this money until we're sure we really need it, because we have to get that comp plan done, and there's not that much in next year's budget for it.
It's fifteen thousand dollars in next year's budget.
Right, but I mean, think about how big some of that stuff in the comp plan is. I mean.
And part of it is, I think, if you don't encumber.
Can we take this ready for council contingency? I know we still have a lot.
Well, yeah, it's fine with me, that, you know, because I'm also withdrawing the other request out of the contingency fund. It's not being posted as such, but I think it's fine to do that. But again, you know, this is not really new. I was not personally in favor of GEO's office doing this. I have said all along that this kind of work, you just hire someone, you get it done. It's not only GEO's office, it's in general, we have a problem with getting things done. You know, we need a new ordinance. Why does it have to take a year?
So can I make a suggestion? You two, and you, the three of you, just kind of work on this, and then we'll put it on whatever agenda anybody would like? I don't know if next week's too soon, or maybe a little too soon.
Next week might be too soon.
Yeah, I'll be here, I'll be away next week. But the other thing, respectfully, I just want to mention, is that it wasn't the planning board didn't deliberate on this list. I was asked to come up with the. I was asked to come up with the list, which I presented to Jan. So it isn't something that the planning board has deliberated, all this list that, or, you know, these areas, these zoning ordinances that I felt specifically needed attention. And also, I think, just given the workload, being the solicitor for the council and for the planning board and the zoning board, we felt that an outside solicitor who had time to focus on one thing rather than being spread across so many things that's had a lot of experience in zoning, writing and comp plan, would benefit us and help, help speed up the process. But the other issue with that is also, we wanted to try, we were trying to get a contract with somebody so we could encumber the funds because as of June thirtieth, those funds are gone. So if you just say the work is going to be ongoing, as of June thirtieth, what remains in that fund will be gone. So it's complicated.
We can make.
If there's a contract.
You have to have a contract or however you do it.
But we can make a motion to roll over.
I don't think so, not with the need.
We do it.
Well, the way we used to do it, we rolled over, right?
You have to have specific, you have to have a specific invoice or something to account for those funds for Denise to encumber the funds.
If I may, you do have, you have, you've authorized me to undertake the work, so you actually do have a contract. It's, it's the solicitor's contract and that's the contract that you've entered into and which has encumbered this money. And, and we've already started to, to put in the work on this and the intention is to work through the end of June to, to spend this money.
So your intention isn't to spend thirty thousand?
It is, and, and with both in-house and outside support, yes.
So I want to withdraw my motion and maybe Monday, find another way to pay labor counsel. And I think you could probably take it for council contingency, because I looked it up last, this weekend and there's still money in there, yeah. I can withdraw my motion? No, because it doesn't say council contingency. Wasn't advertised, Nancy.
The labor lawyer just stepped out of the building, so I think we can, we can hold off on his bill while he's not looking.
Oh, he's here for executive.
Okay, can we carry on the agenda or?
Yeah.
Sure.
We'll be okay? All right, well, we'll be back, we'll be back in just seven days, so.
So we skipped in five D two?
The planning chair and you two can work it out.
All of five D.
Counselors that are interested, pile on.
All of five D, okay.
Okay. Tax assessor and counselor Katz, the budget.
Dave Roberts has sat through two long meetings to get to this motion.
Let you go first.
Did we vote on the DNC?
We did. They were unanimous, I should tell you.
What are we on now?
E.
D was withdrawn and E is, is, is no motion was taken.
Why is D, I don't have any answer.
Tax assessor Dave Roberts and counsel of Katz, fiscal year twenty twenty.
Are there questions for the tax assessor?
No, I thought he wanted to speak.
No.
No, well, originally, originally this item for the assessor was in our consent agenda. And I requested in our call to.
That's right.
Just put it on here so he could, so we could talk about it without withdrawing it out from the consent agenda.
Openly talking about it?
Well, I, I had expected whatever was going to be in the consent agenda would be presented to us. But there's nothing in the packet to that effect. I, but I think we're talking about the tax rate and the levy on which that's based.
Good evening. So really quick, so after the budget was passed at the FTR and after my office tallied up all the valuations of the town, including the exemptions that we apply to people's individual assessments, we came up with a tax levy of thirty-seven million eight twenty-seven eight thirty-four. And that is roughly a third of one percent reduction from last year's levy. However, that translates into a twenty nineteen tax rate of fifteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per thousand, which represents roughly a three point six percent reduction in the tax rate.
Biggest then record?
Possibly. And what really drove that is the growth of the town this year. The town typically has growth of just less than one percent. Some years it may be half of one percent, another year it might be point seven five. This year, basically because of the casino, not only the real estate, but the tangible assessments that are attached to the casino and the longplex, we had roughly sixty-five percent of our growth was because of those two properties and the tangible assessment. But the growth of the town was, coincidentally enough, roughly three point six percent increase, which represents roughly eighty-one million nine hundred thousand in new growth.
What was the number, six something? Six.
Six, something for what?
What drove this was the six, no.
Oh, sixty percent of the growth was because of the casino.
Right.
The tangible property that's attached to the casino, the gaming machines, the restaurants and the longplex.
Really quickly, can you remind me that the tax treaty with power plant, when do we need to worry about that or?
Next year. We, we, right, so if you recall, part of the budget process this year, I asked for an additional thirty thousand dollars so we could go out and have an appraisal done of the power plant in preparation of the treaty expiring.
So the levy you mentioned, is that all the abatements are in there, it's, it's all inclusive?
So on the ballot, the wording is specifically a levy property tax not to exceed thirty-seven million eight forty-two zero forty-eight. So that's my directive. So as far as the assessor is concerned, I don't care what makes up that number, I just can't levy a tax in excess of that. I'm still going to issue abatements regardless.
Okay, so that means that that's what, the most we can get and then if there are abatements, it would be less.
Correct, correct.
Well, that was my own question for him. And the reason I have a section on here was I just, I don't know that we can or would want to do anything before the new fiscal year on this budget, but that's an additional fourteen thousand less than was allowable on the property tax, which means we're, based on the appropriation from municipal on the ballot, we are seventy-five thousand dollars in deficit to start with. And that's not an impossible problem, but I think we need to think about how to resolve that.
Well, I'm not sure about Justin's math as far as that full number is concerned, but we, but we are in the deficit only for the fact that that number is roughly fourteen thousand dollars less than the maximum levy. And that's because of pennies. You know, if I was to assess a tax rate of fifteen eighty, we're over that maximum levy. So if you're using that one penny, you're not going to get to that exact number. That's always been kind of the issue through the budget process, regardless if we had an FTR or a financial town meeting.
Many years this has been an issue.
It's always been an issue and back in the day when we actually had the meeting, we would vote upon a range, which was more beneficial only for the fact that we didn't have to worry about splitting here's between a penny or not. We would just get to the closest number that we could.
But this number, you had estimated thirty thousand in potential abatements as part of the budgeting process and this number does not include that.
Again, I'm not going to speak to as far as what makes up the budget number because that's not part of my process. My, my only directive is issuing a levy and I have to go by what this levy number is on the ballot.
So any and all abatements will reduce this number?
Correct.
And you estimated during the part, the budget process that there would be just your pick for the thirty thousand.
Roughly thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Correct.
That's where I got that number from, plus the expenditures are thirty thousand dollars higher than.
But conversely also, we also estimate prority taxes. So we may, I forget the number on the prority taxes, let's say it was seventy thousand dollars, we may collect seventy-five thousand or less. You know, so it's always just an estimate as far as the prority tax and the number of abatements. We estimate thirty thousand dollars in abatements, we may only only issue five thousand.
Can we move on?
Okay, I just wanted people to.
This is the same, this is over, Justin.
I'm just suggesting.
We don't have to argue the numbers again, this is over.
Well, you do have to argue the numbers again. And, but I'm saying people should think about how we would resolve this apparent deficit for the next fiscal year as that comes. That's the only reason I wanted to discuss this at this point. You can laugh, but it is a problem.
Yeah, I don't understand, we, everybody's had lots of agenda time, this is like the shortest one so far.
Well, they want to be able to mock and pretend there's no problem with the budget, which they supported, that's all that is. I'm saying it's not, it was a resolvable problem, we should resolve it transparently and clearly.
But Dave doesn't feel it's a problem right this moment.
Certainly not a problem for the tax.
It's not the assessor's problem and it's not.
It's not the assessor's problem, but also even if we were to go along with the recommended budget and your theory is that the, the abatements were in there, we would still be at a deficit, no matter what the number is because of the rounding issues on that penny. So if your suggested budget was higher than or lower than this one, we still would not hit that number on the mock because of the rounding of the penny.
Which happens every year.
So we, we could be one thousand dollars short, we could be twenty-three thousand dollars short.
But normally you would have that thirty thousand dollars of buffer, whatever the case might be. Because you're assessing taxes at thirty thousand dollars more than you think you're going to need to pay for the expenditures.
That part is correct, that part's correct.
So the rounding could come out in a wash. I mean, it's all, it's all just assumptions at that point. There are assumptions we'll have to address in some kind of fashion, that's all I'm suggesting here.
The treasurer and the tax assessor seem to think that, that there isn't a problem with, with that. I mean.
Every year we have that and it works itself out.
It's every year.
We do not have this identical problem every year. We don't have to argue about it now, we can argue about it in a new fiscal year if that's, but this is a new, different problem. And we may decide the best solution is just to pretend it doesn't exist. I'm suggesting we probably shouldn't do that. I just want people to thinking about this as the budget comes forward in July.
So maybe the, the next time, to your point, this is like a good early heads up, but when the monthly, when the monthly treasurer reports come out, that would probably be a good opportunity to take a look at this, to sort of see.
Well, I would think, I mean, the ongoing thing, I mean, my initial thought was that because the budget appropriates thirty thousand dollars more than was in the line items, we could create an account that's called, you know, whatever, extra appropriation or whatever and keep an eye on the, and we don't spend that, we just know it's there because we know it's, it's in the appropriation and we don't spend it. And we do the same thing here, find some money to put in there. And it just gives us a benchmark to see how we're doing against, against the.
I might suggest, I might suggest we ask the treasurer, because ultimately she is fiduciarily responsible for all this and maybe she'll think that's a good idea. But I would suggest that we're not really the people to determine how to do that because the treasurer by law has that responsibility. So why don't we ask her how that goes?
Well, I'm not sure that we don't have responsibility for the budget, I mean, we've just done a bunch of transfers. I would expect we would involve the treasurer in the discussion of how best to accommodate this problem.
Yeah, let's do that. I think the treasurer reports, I certainly think we also have fiduciary responsibilities in addition to the treasurer, but I appreciate the early heads up. My question, the, the two decimal points, is that just a feature of the charter? Is that a overriding state law, the, to the penny? You couldn't do fractions of a penny?
In theory, we could, we just never have as a matter of practice. It does cause a lot of confusion, some communities do do a fraction of a penny. But when you do that, when people do the math on the tax bill, they're just looking at the value plus the rounded up penny. So sometimes it causes more issues than it's worth. And generally, it's not a large number, like Justin pointed out, this year it's fourteen thousand. And we could address that next year for sure, but we would definitely have to do a, an educational system to the taxpayers that we are using a fraction of a penny.
Well, some of this goes back to the budget committee. In some years, we remember to round up and in some years, we, we forget to round up that fraction and just round down. So I, I think it could probably be resolved without much, you just figure out.
Well, since the FTR, it's, it's always been rounding down because we can't exceed the levy cap. Not the levy cap, but the, not to exceed more than.
My last question is, since we're talking about fractions of a penny, which Superman movie was? Or Richard Pryor, was it? Is it called Fractions of the Penny? I'll let you think about that.
Thanks. I might lose some sleep now.
Put it on our next agenda.
Well, there, office space is for you young kids, but for us old timers. Okay, I am going to try to very quick. So we have two ordinances to consider and, you know, we spent a lot of time, we spent a lot of time, was it one of our, we've had a few meetings lately about some tough issues around policy grounds. I think we were, if not all seven of us, I felt like pretty close to all seven of us, were trying to wrestle with the forty-five day deadline on the special event liquor license, if I'm saying that correctly. And then we were also sympathetic to an applicant for a nonprofit event that was confined by the ordinance as to how many signs could be placed.
We didn't get an insistence. We have to an insistence.
Oh, it's like, because I didn't hand them out.
We didn't get it in advance.
No, no, it's in front of me, I'm sorry. How about I hand them out? That's one of them. And, I don't know, I think instead of talking about it, we just start working on them. And so therefore.
Is it tonight?
No, not tonight, but if I understand the process correctly.
Oh my God. He didn't even ask.
It's just a.
Well, if I understand the process correctly, it's actually at least a three-step process. And this is something like step one where somebody, and this could be anybody in the town, by the way, if I, and, correct me if I have this wrong. But if you want to change an ordinance, any of us, including any of you, can come to the council with a, with a proposed ordinance. If this body decides that it will consider the ordinance, which I'm asking this body to do, then we will refer it to the town solicitor for his review and comment. Now, in this case, because this ordinance was generated by the council, the solicitor has already provided review and comment. But if a member of the public were to recommend an ordinance change, I think the burden is on the pub, the public member to at least serve up a starter draft. I'm not quite sure if it's conceptual enough, but you do have a starter draft here. And if this body decides to vote to set for consideration, for further consideration, it goes back to the office of the solicitor and by charter, it must be scheduled for the next meeting, which is what I'm requesting, that it be scheduled for the next meeting, which is Monday, June tenth. At that meeting, this body can consider whether to set for a third here, a third meeting, which would be a public hearing, it's something like twenty-one days out. I think if we, and, and, and I'm trying to move this as fast as I possibly can to try because our advice that we received last time is that despite our sympathies and best intentions, we had no discretion under the ordinance. And we had to, we were not able to waive the, the fourteen day periods and the forty-five day deadlines. And so I think with respect to the roller derby special event at the longplex, we will probably not be able to move this quick enough, but at least we reacted to what perhaps is a problem and tried to fix it. And for the charity event, this, if, if passed, and it has to pass tonight, it has to pass again Monday, the tenth, and then it would have to go to public hearing and pass again, if it can make it through all three of those at Gauntlet, then it's possible that we could then choose to allow some relief on the, on the charity walk. And just from a larger point of view is, I think sometimes you struggle with this, there's, there's something to be said by looking at the entire code ordinances, which is sitting on the solicitor's desk, it's two and a half inches high. And sometimes, at least in time for myself, you get paralyzed when trying to know where to begin. And, and GEO and I agree, I think we just begin. And we just start fixing these ordinances. And if we come up on an ordinance six months later that makes us come back and take another look at that, then we'll just come back and do it again. Because we, we just, I just want to move these along.
Are we working on the solar ordinance also?
Solar, absolutely, I'd like to do that too.
Because we have, that has totally stopped.
It's been six months and I'm hoping to ask the planning board for status on that. So this, the two drafts you have in front of you, one is very simple. It is, it would change the forty-five day deadline to thirty unless, at least as this draft has it, a two-thirds majority of the council would waive it. And the other one would change the two sign limitation to four and the twelve, I'm sorry, the, the fourteen day period to twenty-one. Now, GEO, let's say we pass this just to keep the process moving, but perhaps I would like a number bigger than four. From a matter of process, can we still make changes that are within the fair ambit of the?
Yes.
We do it all the time.
As long as the ordinance that is advertised is the one you vote on. So this is a stamp draft because I want to indicate that this is a preliminary discussion about this. What, what goes on the next agenda, the next meeting, is the one that you, that you. What goes on the next agenda, the next meeting, is the one that you're bound to.
At, not going into the meeting, but we could amend it at the meeting, and then that would be the one.
Right, because you're only advertising the general description, sort of as it appeared in the.
Right, and the advertisement actually says that amendments and changes can happen at that.
Right, because that's the point of a public hearing, right, is to consider.
The only restraint you would have is it has to be within the topic, right? So you can't amend this to be a Second Amendment ordinance if it's a First Amendment ordinance. You have to stick with, you have to stick with your amendment, or whatever it might be. You can't go off the subject, and that's a very, it's a very subjective, you know, issue, but I think. Okay, well.
Why can't we go to advertisements?
So just to clarify that, we get this, we could, I suppose, make changes now, but we don't have to. At next Monday's meeting, the solicitor will give a review of this. At that point, we could change it again before going to public hearing, and then at the public hearing, we could change it again if we wanted to. Do we have?
I don't think you need that many meetings. I'm just, I think you could. I think the thought was that this was a new process, and so bring these forward in draft form right now. But I don't think there's anything prevents you from voting in favor of these changes and moving along to publication.
Oh, right now? What about the next, well, I mean, hey, hold on a second.
Because the solicitor's already reviewed this.
But it hasn't been presented to the council for consideration.
You need a public hearing.
Somebody make a motion.
So if a council member comes up with the ordinance, you can skip the presentation to the council?
The council has to review it, and the proposal shall be reviewed by the solicitor for form and legality, which I would do prior to the public hearing. Now, I've already done it here in this case. But although there could be questions tonight that come up, there are actually some interesting questions, even in these simple changes, that raise their head.
Why don't we just put it to the next Monday?
I'd be more comfortable with that, because I'm not quite sure about the process.
The one, not so much the liquor license, because that's in our purview. But I am a little worried about the signed ordinance. In theory, that, you know, this is a zoning ordinance, and the planning board is supposed to be advisory to us. So the idea that we're just going to say, we're not going to send this to the planning board, at least for an opinion, or help them have, identify the law of unintended consequences. And I know Gio's nodding his head, because zoning is full of the law of unintended consequences, where it sounds good on paper, and then you don't realize what a mess you've made. So, you know, at the very least, I think we should send this over to the planning board. If not, just for some comments and some review on this, and potentially to identify what some other communities do about, you know, these signs and what the potential pitfalls are. I mean, I will say this, I know that we had somebody here in front of us, I know we're trying to help them, but at the same time, they're still not in compliance, right? So, you know, and, you know, we're trying to help this person, but in the meantime, they haven't complied with what happened at the last council meeting. So could, can we also send this to the planning board for at least, you know, get them to get it? Can it go on their next agenda? Is it posted there? Is your agenda posted?
Tomorrow night.
So you can't, so you won't, you couldn't look at it till July, right? You have a meeting this week, tomorrow. Okay, well.
I'm all about taking input from the planning board. I don't know what your workload is. I just recognize that that process, in this case, we might miss the charity event. So I ideally see those paths proceed in parallel.
Yeah, I can tell you that as I looked at this, you know, obviously, with any redraft, you have unintended consequences or potential for that. Even though there were other components of the signed ordinance that I found problematic, I didn't touch them, because even if they are problematic, illegal, unenforceable, that wasn't the question I was asked to solve, right? So I know that there are probably a dozen other amendments within the two pages that I gave you that would be worth considering at length, but that wasn't the short-term problem. And I think the approach was, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good here. If you can solve a problem that you saw at the last meeting with an ordinance change, let's not view ordinance changes as this insurmountable obstacle. Sometimes they're easy, and sometimes they should be treated as easy. But obviously, the input is of great value, and I think Rob's direction was, let's move this along to see how this process can best work if we want to start fixing. I mean, I've already made a long list of 30 areas in the code that need ordinance changes, and that's in five months of sitting here in almost every section of your ordinance that have constitutional or case law contrary to the law. So you've got a lot of these to do, and if you don't start someday, then you'll never get them done.
As far as the charity event and why you want to change this, they're not being compliant now. There's signs everywhere, so I don't think they're like.
I'm not sure it's our role to.
Well, no, no.
That's right.
I'm not sure that's inappropriate to be commenting on.
Whether they're in compliance or not, I don't, they're not here for a hearing.
Yeah, but you're worried that they, you want them to put up more signs, but I don't think that's going to be a problem. That's what I was trying to say, that I think.
Practical perspective.
Practical perspective.
Well, we, at least, well, I know Counselor Hilton objected, but some of us, kind of, maybe just me, kind of said, I don't know if I call it a wink-wink, but said.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say out loud here.
I, believe me, this is not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to fight and die on this hill. I just, I just, I do think we should start fixing these, maybe one every other meeting.
Can I ask a question, because John's shaking your head.
Are you?
He's trying to stay awake.
So did you, do you have an opinion that you'd like to share? If you don't, you don't have to. I'm just asking.
I don't think he does. He doesn't want to. Okay, that's all right. I didn't mean to butcher.
I have misgivings about the piecemeal approach. I think, you know, I can understand why you want to move things ahead. On the other hand, as has been indicated, just to help someone with a charitable event is one thing. Thinking through the consequences of what the landscape looks like when everybody's going to have more signs.
Yeah, come back to.
Time is another thing, and it's going to take some time, or it should, I think. And, you know, in general, I thought there was a commitment to actually move towards a review and a rewrite of the zoning ordinance, not only for the comp plan, but longer term. Maybe that was my mistake, but I think that's where we need to go, and we need an attorney to do it.
And, I mean, this is, the sign ordinance, in and, forget these temporary signs, the sign ordinance has a whole bunch of other problems with it, too. I mean, I don't know, I think we should send it to the planning board. I think, when is this event, July what?
20th, I believe.
It's close to the end of the, yeah.
July 20th.
So July 20th.
And I think the fastest we could move on this would be June 1st.
Okay, and at the end of the, and at the end of the day, even if, even if we got that done, he'd only get two more signs.
Possibly. I'd look to increase that.
I think for two more signs and the potential that we then have to undo something, I would rather send it to the planning board and have this get done the right way, then hurry it through for two more signs.
You know, what if Tiberian had a, someplace where everybody knew to look? I'm thinking where we go, this island in Maine, there's just a huge board on one intersection. And that's where everything is posted of events that are going, and people know, and people know to look at.
You know that's.
Derek Nice will have that.
Yeah.
It's not a bad idea rather than.
Rather than having it all around town, just have an event place.
I don't, I mean, to me, all those, all those lawn signs, to me, they're, I mean, I had to admit, I don't read them. It's like visual litter. It's like, I'm not even sure that there's effective is having a place that has, a nice place that has announcements.
That everybody gets used to looking at, and it would, I think it's a possible answer, anyway.
Okay, well.
I just think we need to do it the right way and start going through each ordinance and on a regular basis, start doing all the audience, ordinances, even though this was a good idea, but it looks like it was cherry-picked for a particular event, which I feel bad that, you know, he can't advertise the way he wants, but I don't know if this is the way to go. I.
Could I suggest that there are three steps to this? So if we were to pass it, there would be three steps, and if we were to not pass it, there would be three steps. So if we were to approve this to go to the next step, we can still, next week, say, you know what? I don't want to cherry pick. I've thought about this for a week, and I'm still on a position to.
And then in the three-week posting period, you can also decide to not move ahead with it. You'll have, you'll have a month to consider this, even if you were to take each step, starting tonight.
So there's no deadline right now.
But we have to pay to advertise it.
Right, but not by next.
Not tonight, though, right.
So I would ask, I'll make a motion to move these on to the next step, both of these, and I would ask people to consider them. And next week, if these objections still stand to the process and so forth, then we'll decide not to move it forward. But if, if we want to take some awareness of the desire to move swiftly as one positive reason for doing this, then we, we don't lose anything by going on to the next week.
Mr. President, I already have at least two, maybe three other events that will end up having signs around here. So I, I do need more clarity on it, because I'm going to have to start telling them when they come in and request those licenses, that the restriction on the signs that has, you know, not been enforced before, whether it should have been or not, but now they're going to have to realize that we have that Miles for Megan, and there's another event that comes up with the soccer with it. I have that Philomena's Walk, Race Walk fundraiser that they do for cystic fibrosis. I have, a couple of them have already contacted me.
Yeah, but they have to follow this until we change it. Is everybody, is everybody agreeing with that?
I would, I would add to Nancy's point that you have a zoning official who believes that he has to enforce these as written. And so people may be buying signs and finding them, sorry, finding their DBW as opposed to where they place them.
Right.
As it should be.
All right, well, this was, I only asked for 10 minutes, so usually it's, somebody's got a phone usually near the, someone have a BlackBerry near the.
Oh, maybe it's me.
It's my folder?
Okay. We're, did you bifurcate that, or was your motion for both together?
I'll move them both along in a process. We can discuss them next week. Just to leave open the possibility that we might want to do it, that there might be further consideration of how to do it, that would be acceptable to people on the council.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Katz. I am the sponsor. I will go ahead and second these. Any further discussion? If the motion passes, it is merely set back on the agenda in one week. There's no public advertising. And then the council listener would be tasked to review these for form, although. You can perrefrain your prior work, I guess.
I did, I did look at the prior, but I certainly wouldn't, sorry, I wouldn't miss the opportunity to have input from the planning board or the administrative official of planning or zoning or anyone else.
My folder's not touching that.
Is that, ah, there you go. That seemed to do it. They were, they were fighting each other.
Is there enough contingency money to just buy a new AV system and be the end of it?
All right, let's go, because Tim, Port Tim, look at Tim.
All right, so my, my comment was that I would certainly welcome the input from planning or zoning or anyone else who has a vested interest in sign ordinances prior to next week, because that would be the opportunity to make changes before publication.
Justice's motion include going to the planning board?
I'll amend my motion to forward these as well to the planning and zoning, with the expectation that if they can do something about it, they will, and if not, they don't have to. At worst, they'll have another roughly month to comment at the hearing. But, yeah, we'll put that. Donna, I would point out that if this doesn't pass, is the issue's dead. If it does pass, we can discuss it in more detail to address process concerns next week.
Nothing's going on.
Well, no, they can review it. I'm just, I added that they would.
Well, I don't think that's a good idea. Do they have time to review it?
Well, if they do have time, they do. If they don't, they don't.
They won't meet, they wouldn't be able to review it until their agenda meeting in July, because their agendas for this month are.
But if we forward this to them, it'll be accessible to all the members, and they can comment as they like at our meeting. My only point is, all these obstacles, we always, we come up with all kinds of obstacles for everything. In this case, all we would be doing is giving ourselves one more week to determine whether those obstacles should kill the forward motion. That's all this vote would do.
Yeah, I mean, I am, I, I got some sponsoring this, so I'd like to argue it a little bit. I mean, I, I feel, I feel like every time we try to do something, there's 80 reasons why we can't do it. I'm getting a little tired of it. I just think we just need to, like, give the planning board, they're free to comment. If they're too busy, if they want to call a special meeting, that's great. If we, if this thing were to pass in a month, and the planning board comes back in two months and says, change this, then we'll change it. Like, we just have to start fixing these ordinances. It's just.
My feeling is, I don't think we should have, we should be rushing to do this to accommodate somebody having a special event, where we may be, you know, creating a problem.
I think the ship has sailed on the special event. I think, I think that the, what you're doing is, you're preventing this from the next person who comes in within 44 days of their event, or whatever the case may be. I think that this may not necessarily help the ones that's already in line.
I assume you, do you agree with Mr. Davis that the shall meant shall, and we had no discretion on the? Okay, okay. Well, if nothing else, I think we're starting off a nice conversation about the ordinance amendment process. So it is pretty late, so I'd like to go to a vote. Are there any objections proceeding?
Nope.
And the, the motion is simply to set this for the council's next hearing, or next meeting, next meeting, which happens to be Monday, June 10, and to task this listener with further review and comment. All those in favor? Are there any opposed? And I totally lost count again.
Six, six, one.
Sound like it's 42, 421?
Five, one, one.
Five, one, one, okay, thank you. All right, moving right along. Are we on the general announce? No, we have some carryovers. Mr. Katz, can you? I seconded, yeah, I don't, I wanted to second, but that was my item.
So I pulled.
Consent agenda. I don't have my list of what we pulled.
I do. We pulled, I pulled 4A1, and I just, on page one at the bottom, the second paragraph up. It was, it was under two reactions to April 25 Board of Canvassers meeting. Council de Madera stated she discussed the elector petition with the town treasurer prior to the meeting. Then there's a period, and then it goes, the town treasurer did not see. I think it was de Madera stated, the town treasurer did not see.
I'm sorry, where are you reading your vote?
4A1, second paragraph up from the bottom. Second sentence. I think it should say de Madera stated, the town treasurer did not see. That's my change.
What is she saying? I stated that.
De Madera stated, the treasurer said, and then the rest of that sentence.
Did not see any issue.
Right. Okay.
That's it?
Yep, and then.
Any objections? Okay.
I have it, I guess. It was way at the back.
And then.
It's, these are minutes.
No, this is, I, I don't know, I just, I felt I should pull this, just given, put a little levity, maybe. 4B1, and again, it was the minutes from the Board of Canvassers, and on the back page, it says, Member de Moran motion to certify the elector's, elector petition signature, seconded by Member P. Amrell. The emotion passed unanimously. And given that meeting, I just struck, it struck me funny.
That's not even on the agenda.
You can't change that.
It's a good check, it's a good pick-up check, but that's not what.
Unfortunately, we just filled the deputy town clerk position.
All right.
All right, I think we need a motion to accept the.
I'll move to accept the consent agenda items as labeled in our prior agenda. 4A1 as amended, and 4B1 as amended.
As acknowledged, what we do is acknowledge, yeah.
As accepting the emotion.
Well, no, to be clear, 4A1 is a full, is an approval, because there are minutes, and 4B1 is an acknowledgement. Okay, got a motion? Did I get a second? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous. Kind of, we like them. All right, where does that leave us? General Announcements, or was there any other consent agenda items? I don't have my list from the last meeting. Very helpful. Okay, who's up? Mr. Administrator, anything to add? Mr. Administrator, anything to add?
No.
Madam Clerk.
The only thing I forgot to mention before is that the idea of bringing Jeannie Vieg into deputy clerk, she'll be handling, council has no reflection on, of course, Jeannie Spencer, who has been doing the minutes and does a fine job of them. It's just she didn't want to move to a non-union position. So, I just wanted to say thanks to Jeannie, too, because she does do a good job on that.
Thank you, Jeannie.
And I also had a request from the people with the roller derby to come before the council to ask for a waiver, because they have completed all the other, but I'm going to tell them no.
Apparently, we have no.
I tell them, you told me to say no.
The word of the week is discretion, apparently we have none in this case. But.
We have not followed that rule in the past, I got to tell you.
Any, anything about maybe the catering idea, does that kind of?
They can't do a catering, because they have, all their liquor is donated, so, it's because it's a nonprofit for empowering women. That was the response I suggested.
Look at that. Donated? It's all donated.
So are they going to sell it? They're selling it.
The problem they have, the problem they have is serving it.
Do they have tip servers?
It's not a private event?
If it's off-premise, if it's not, if it's not somewhere where you already have a liquor license attached, whether a liquor store, or a bar, or restaurant, you cannot have a special event and serve liquor without the license that they came for. At a private home, you can, obviously, things like that.
I was ready to waive it last week, but the legal team said that I couldn't, so I took an oath to follow the liquor license law.
And believe me, if I thought you could change the ordinance to eliminate that, I would, but unfortunately, it's state law that dictates your ordinance, that you can't get around that without having your legislative folks change it up at the General Assembly, which might be a great idea, by the way.
I would, I mean, if they request to come before us, I don't know if I would stop them, but I could, because, but I would suggest, just let them, are they aware of the potential ordinance? I mean, if they, if they move their thing even a week, that might be, if that's still possible, I don't know how early on in their planning.
I don't know that they'd move it, but.
Well, just let, just let them know that that's.
But I generally try to discourage someone, if I know that the council cannot take action on them, why would we have them come through all this?
Did they do a formal request, can I call them, or is it?
Sure, I'll give you their number.
I would only add that you could potentially just move the liquor ordinance that you already considered tonight.
Straight to public hearing.
For public hearing, and you could set that for public hearing and maybe get in in time, because that one, I think, is less controversial than the sign ordinance might.
Certainly simpler.
It's much simpler. And you're restricted by the state law.
I don't think even 30 days, well, I mean, we just put 30 days as a draft discussion, I'm not saying that, it needs to be the final answer here. They need it faster, aren't they serving, isn't it like?
Yeah, but then also say we could waive it.
It allows a waiver, it's a possibility.
But even if we set a hearing, it'd be 21 days from tonight, which would be June 25th.
Don't they have to advertise?
For the actual ordinance change, that needs a real advertisement. No, it needs public notice.
No, but so does the light, so doesn't the liquor license?
The license doesn't get advertised, not in one day, not in ever one.
Oh, okay.
So you'd have to have a meeting to approve the license prior to their event.
Can we do a retro?
No. No, you can't, no.
That'd be a chain of command question.
I'm just trying to solve a problem here. All right, it sounds like.
So, I'll call her in the morning.
Anything else from town clerk? Okay. Are we, are we going to talk about casinos now?
I am only going to briefly mention two items on the solicitor's agenda. Sorry, I will have two items, one that just was handed at the start of the meeting, I will email you all tomorrow, there's been a request for any communications relative to the Second Amendment discussion earlier tonight, and so I will be sending you all an email asking if you had any emails between staff or each other regarding the matter of enforcement and use of discretion therewith on the proposed Second Amendment resolution. So, sorry for the inconvenience, but we'll have 10 days to respond, and of course, we'd love to respond sooner if there are any responsive documents. Number two, we are now engaged in litigation with a number of other parties, including the Town of Lincoln, over the challenge to the sports betting approvals and commencement of sports betting. There's a question that's been raised as to whether it required an additional voter approval. Sorry?
We raised that way at the.
Yeah, so it's an interesting question, I, to be honest, I have not fully read the brief yet, Justin Shea in my office has, he attended the hearing with Judge Stern. Judge Stern has required that Tiverton and Lincoln come in as indispensable third parties, and so we have a plaintiffs, the plaintiffs will have an obligation to submit briefs on June 24th, that is the same Monday that you have a scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting, I believe. So unless they deliver those at 5:00, and I don't have time to read them, I'll have a better sense of the case at that point, or at least what their arguments are, and so I will be able to present to you at that point. I just thought it was worth mentioning that this is, you know, obviously a matter of statewide import, and obviously of potential fiscal and legal import to the town, so I wanted you to know that we are engaged in representing the town's interests. There'll end up being two questions, the judges ask that they be taken together, one is whether these plaintiffs have standing to raise these issues, and the second is, are the substantive issues. I don't believe they're asking for an injunction at this time, so I don't think it would affect the actual operations, but I think what could happen is, they could force it to a vote. And as you all, I'm sure, know better than I do, that can be interesting, so.
Gio, are there any decisions for the town to make on a policy matter, policy standing for this?
There probably will be, you know, there's really, the two issues I mentioned will be independently moving parts, and, you know, from a purely fiscal interest, it could actually be in the town's interest to allow the standing issue to proceed, and there's other good reasons to do that as well, without objection or with the support of the town, because that might get you to a vote quicker and have less risk of a window of lost revenue. In other words, if you can get this thing to a vote and it's approved, and then they can legally proceed with their sports betting, the town could not have as much risk to the revenue stream. And that might be the better legal choice, even though, you know, it's letting them take the steps that they want to take. My sense, our sense from the hearing, is that if Judge Stern really thought they didn't have standing, if he thought that was going to be an issue, he would have briefed that separately and then just kicked him out. The fact is, he asked me to brief both parts, he's taking them both together, he said he will potentially rule on standing separately, but he didn't buy the efficiency argument that the casinos made. He did not buy that it would be efficient just to get the standing over with so they could toss them, and that would lead me to, you know, think, and you don't try to read judges' minds, right, but it would lead me to think that he might view that as a more substantive issue than the defendant, the defense counsel might otherwise have thought.
So if we were to have to make any policy decisions, what would be the earliest that would happen?
Well, our briefs will be due on July 29th, so as I said, I'm hoping to have something substantive to you on June 24th, although I may not have enough hours between their brief delivery and your meeting to give you a good answer. But, you know, sometime after that, then we have 20, sorry, 35 days till July 29th to file our briefs if we so choose. So, that will take a good 20 days to draft, once we have the policy decisions made and the instruction as to where to go in defense of the town.
And I'm assuming you've seen the voter information guide that was produced by the state of Rhode Island last year, for the casino referendum?
I've got seven boxes full of casino referendum and approval items, I don't know if I've read the voter information guide.
Well, the key piece, in my opinion, in this, is the voter information guide that was produced by the Rhode Island Secretary of State, which takes the referendum questions and then translates them into English, so that the average voter can understand what they're voting for. And if you read that versus the argument over whether or not sports betting was inherently approved, in my opinion, it's really, really clear that that's not the case.
That it was not approved?
That, no, it was not approved, because this came up in front of the council, and that voter information packet, which was produced by the state of Rhode Island, by the Secretary of State, and delivered to all the voters to explain in English what you were voting for, the definitions of what, because this case all hinges on, you know, what the definition of casino and all this, the definitions in that voter information guide are different than what the state legislature claims they are. That document is the piece that, where there's a huge disconnect. So, if you haven't seen it, you should find that.
We'll compare that, those two items promptly.
Just very quickly, because I think there are legal questions as to what did it say or not say, et cetera, et cetera. The policy question is somewhat different, and I think the policy question can be summarized basically now. It's not something that you have to get a whole lot more information. The policy question is whether the town has any objection to the sports betting being approved, or wants to be part of a challenge to that decision.
That's exactly right, and I think, to sum up, if I have this right, the issue that we have been literally dragged into this case, we were ordered by a judge to present ourselves in this case, we did not initiate this lawsuit, and we were not named as a defendant, we were named as an indispensable party by the court, is whether sports betting was properly approved. And I think there are at least three positions that we might take. One is to oppose, one is to support, and one is to try to stay out of it, and stay neutral, and not spend a lot of legal fees on the issue. The judge has ordered us to show up, and that we have and will, and I think that is the kind of question that at least, I think, is something we would benefit from having in the open, public, public input, because I'm, I'm, I think there are good reasons, it's unclear to me what's in the best interest of Tiverton, I don't know that we want to threaten the revenue stream, I don't know that we want to be out of compliance, if that's our view, and we may end up being neutral and maybe not want to spend money in litigation, so I think that we should probably set this for further, a formal hearing, a formal agenda item before June 20, you said June 24th is?
Is when we'll have the full brief from the plaintiffs.
Maybe that's about right, then. That would give you enough time to react?
If we have, if we have a discussion within, say, a week or so of that date, then that would be enough time to react. And I'm happy to take guidance in advance if you have opinions that are already formed, I just, and I should have mentioned, and it's a great point that you raise, Counselor Coulter, that the, my anticipated advice to you, whether you take a for or against position, or you somewhat divide the standing and the substantive positions into, my general advice, I expect, to be that we will simply piggyback on the briefs of the other well-funded and very interested parties, who will do excellent work, I'm sure. I know all the lawyers that are involved, I have great confidence that whichever of those briefs you decide is in the best interest of Tiverton, we will not need to do significant additional legal work from a, you know, drafting point of view. I think they're going to cover most of the issues, I'd be stunned if they, if they didn't, given what's at stake.
This is just an early heads up on a very, I think, complex question, so please put that on your list of review and study. Any other solicitor comments? Okay, open floor to the council. I just have one item, Mr. Fugere had asked for some time, and I agreed to sponsor a proposal to place potentially solar arrays on the industrial park. I can't, did I give you my copy of that at our last meeting?
Yes, I just want to.
Okay. So we'll send that out, I just wanted to give you a heads up that that's coming down, coming down the pike at some point for consideration.
You're not saying to put this on for the next, for the 10th?
I don't know.
Are you just going to distribute it?
If you could distribute it, as soon as you can, I don't know when.
Well, I can scan and distribute it tomorrow, but I mean.
I have one thing.
Can I just comment on that?
Oh, sure.
If I may, I'm sorry, but instead of just putting things on the agenda, and then they haven't really been prepped, which means it takes a long time to deal with them, can we figure out a way where things are more prepared, and therefore don't take as much time as they have been taken?
Part of the reason why I'm trying to give everybody an early heads up on as many matters as possible, so I'm not sure which agenda I ought to be on, depends on competing priorities, but the goal, just like with the casino question, is to let you know it's coming and start to think about it. Back to you.
So, I'm sorry to bring this up, and I actually was kind of hoping Gio might mention it, but our practice in the past, if there has been a complaint, that was at least acknowledged at a first level, is that we acknowledge it in public, because the public has a right to know. And I think it's now been two weeks or more, that there's, you know, regrettably, an open meetings complaint, and it hasn't come up in public, it hasn't been mentioned, I know a lot of information doesn't necessarily have to be given, but I don't think that, I don't think not even in a small way, letting the public know is appropriate, I just don't. So, if Gio has any comment, however small, I think it should, I think it should be made, it's always been the practice in the past, and frankly, as a matter of fact, when, you know, Joe and Denise and I filed an open meetings complaint against this body, including ourselves, we had a, you know, full-on three-ring circus special meeting over it. So, I think that, as much as I don't like being the subject of another one, I think that.
Yeah, I'm happy to defer to you and the council on how thorough those solicitor comments should be, I mean, I, there's a number of pending items, and I don't want to necessarily mention each one of them just as a time consideration, but I agree that they're very important. I don't have a particular update on that one, I actually did receive, you know, as I think I mentioned two meetings ago, we were going to prepare a, it may not have been two meetings ago, and maybe it was by email to council when we received it, but that we prepared a response, they had, we had 10 days to prepare that response, we filed it timely, we sent it to the council as we sent it around, and then, literally as I was driving over here at 6:00 or so, I received an email from the complainant with her response to our response, which she had to deliver within five days. I haven't read it yet, so I don't have anything substantive to offer you, but I'd be happy to sort of give my laundry list every time, I just, I know that that can, they tend to be issues that bear discussion, and I don't know how much time you want to give on each agenda.
I mean, in the past, it wasn't that there was a lot of discussion, it's just that it got acknowledged at least once in public, so that, you know, the public knows, I mean, I think all those things become public documents, I think, as far as I understand, and, but, you know, not to say anything, and then if a decision comes down, it looks like we're, I just think it's better to acknowledge that there's a complaint, it's there, whatever's going to happen is going to happen.
And I can certainly assure you that there's no desire to sweep anything under the rug, or, you know, sub rosa, as is our Latin phrase of the night. I, in fact, I would say, within 60 seconds after distributing that to the council, the response, your intrepid reporter had his copy in hand, and, you know, and there's no, there's no resistance to, you know, being very open about this, at least on my part, I think that's the only way to proceed, so I, if I agree with you, and if it's your preference to have a number of these items raised under solicitors' comments at each meeting, I'm happy to adjust.
Sounds like a plan.
Mr. President.
Sir.
I was asked to bring this up, there's a group that's been organizing to try to get a dog park together, and they asked me to find out if there was any land available in the industrial park that might be feasible for a dog park, something, you know, that can't be built on, and so I just was asked to bring that up to the council to look into it if there's a possibility of finding something.
Wonderful. All right, we are, I'm sure we have, we're going to have a one-minute executive session, this is a town administrator item, Rhode Island General Law, 42-46-584, this involves a certain investigation of allegation of misconduct, either criminal or civil, had notice has been given to the subject person? Does that need to be on the agenda, the notice was given?
You can't give that person notice.
But did they get supplemental notice, or?
Are they an employee still?
We've discussed this before.
I can't give them a notice.
Are we okay on the agenda, that's the only one, we're okay on the agenda. All right, may I have a motion to proceed to executive session, please?
So moved.
And a second? A second, and a second for Mr. Striggs. Counselor Roll Call, Counselor Perry?
Yes.
No.
No? Okay. Counselor de Madera?
No.
No. Counselor Katz?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor Cook?
Okay. Counselor Cook?
Yes.
And Counselor Triggs?
Yes.
And the chair votes. It is, what is it, 10:37. I guess that is enough to keep us in past 10 o'clock, right? We've got five yeses? Okay. Executive session for one minute.